All right. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to our Thursday, special Thursday, meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. This is our first time. We are broadcasting as a hybrid model, being in person. And I also want to do a special shout out that this is Cory and Jean's first in-person meeting as a board. So, welcome. Very exciting. We are happy to be back. I know. Woo!
Goodbye COVID.
Yeah. And we have a really important night reviewing our legal representation tonight, and we have our first firm here waiting for us. But before we do that, small order of business first. We have a quick, special, one-day liquor license to approve for the South Shore Art Center. And this is an application for their movie night for next Friday for the Arts Festival. And they are requesting a 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM liquor license, and I believe for a food truck for their event. And it has been checked. We think everything is good to go, so we do just need to approve this. But before looking at it, does anyone have any questions about this event? Yes?
Just some clarification. It's tomorrow. So, it's July 3rd, I believe. July 26th.
I am sorry. That date got changed. Okay. Okay. Actually, we have to officially take attendance first, don't we?
Yes, we do.
I'm used to doing. All right. So, roll call, starting with, Jack's not here, so.
Cory, if it's here.
Jean Healy-Diffold here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Carrie Thompson here. And Jack is on his way as well. All right. So, we're all here. So, this is for tomorrow night. Rain date, 7:25 on the north side of the Common from 6:00 PM to 10:30 PM. Number of participants estimated 100 to 150. Any questions about this liquor license or issues of this event?
And just clarification on the location of the food trucks and the, I believe there's like a liquor, there's a beer and wine truck?
I believe it's the Untold Brewing Truck that they're requesting. But, I mean, besides the north side, they don't specify where they're going to be asking the trucks to park specifically. I don't know.
Tracy, do you remember? Because when we, when they came before us to permit the entire event, I was a little unclear whether they're going to place them on the Common on the north side, like where they have food during the festival, or whether it was going to be in William Long Road.
I thought it was in the between road.
You're right. That's okay.
So, we can confirm with the Arts Festival about this and direct them to that certain place? Yeah?
This is, this is only for Untold. The other liquor is, has their own catering license, so they're separately approved by the state.
Okay.
They've given us notice of coming, so they did what they were supposed to, give us 24 hours' notice.
Okay.
They're coming. This is last minute because Untold is separate, and they didn't mention that last time.
I see.
So, this is just for the Untold.
Okay.
But again, I think if our call, the recommendation was going to go onto the street, like they do with the farmer's market.
Right.
Because they kind of kept them safe and kind of out of the way, because the movie is going to be on that.
Part of the Common. Okay.
I assumed this meant it would be where the trucks usually park for the farmer's market, but we can confirm with the troops. I don't think they'll have a problem being directed wherever we tell them to go.
Or we can tell them they can get the permits if they have to be on that road.
Exactly. Exactly. So, it's for the one Untold truck. But we can clarify about that.
So, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the license for the Social Arts Center and the Untold Brewery, um, truck for, um, Friday, 7:23, 6:00 to 10:00. And just ask for some clarification on the location, just so we know going in.
Do we have a second? We have a second. I think we are able to just do not roll call votes now. Point of order, right? So, yay. All those in favor of approving this one-day liquor license for the Arts Festival?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye, okay. Aye as well. All those opposed? All right. We will sign this and pass this around, and this is good to go. All right. Now, moving on to the reason, the main reason why we are here tonight. It's really important from time to time that we assess our legal representation and make sure that our representation is best serving the town. So, tonight, we have asked all of the law firms representing us, we have one more next week, but most of them representing us, to come and ask, you know, answer some questions, get a feel for how they're, they fit with our town, and we think it's really important to do that. So, we're honored to have Brooks and Durencis here first. And a little order of business. Every Select Board member has one question they're going to be asking you specifically, but we will start with just a five-minute opening statement with introductions, and we will then move on to the five questions you have with some brief follow-ups if we need, and we have about an hour to do this. So, does that sound good to all of you, Brooks and Durencis? All right. So, we will begin just with a five-minute opening statement of introduction.
Do you want to come up, sit here at the front? Because I think that's where the microphone is going to work.
Yeah. Come on up to the mics. Get closer. We'll get cozy. Hello? If we can maybe?
Right there, yeah, that should be fine. Yeah, right there should be fine.
Paul, you could actually move them.
You could bring other seats up, too, if you want.
Maybe over closer to you.
I can do it.
No, I think.
Or does it need to stay by that?
On the mic.
Okay. New tech. We're working on our new tech. I hope everyone can hear us.
Right.
So, I'm Durencis. Twenty-five years. It's been almost always a pleasure. Occasions that have been really tricky. Managed to keep the town out of trouble. The thing that makes us different, I think it's where I want to start, what makes us different from the other firms that you're looking at, is that having been here for 25 years, we have a lot of institutional knowledge. You could mention almost any name, and I can tell you I know who they are. I know what their role is in the town. I know how we got to where we are. I was there when we did the Town Manager Act. So, I know what words were intended to mean in that document. Just a lot of history. So, that's, that's point number one. Point number two is that unlike other law firms, I myself am a Select Board member. A Select Board member of nine terms. And as, as a Select Board member, seven as a chairman. Before then, I was on the Town's Finance Committee, and then I was on the. I have been on both sides of the table, and I know how exasperating it is sometimes when you ask for a legal opinion and you get a 20-page, single-spaced document that says on the window. Just reading it. You're totally confused.
Yep.
I, I understand that. We bring a level of trying to get things done, goal-oriented. We try to ask, what do you want to accomplish? And then we try to figure out a way to do it. But sometimes we get this abstract question. The abstract question is because you want to do something. So, rather than spending a lot of time and energy on that abstract question, we try to figure out, what are you trying to accomplish? Maybe there's a better, simpler way to do it. The third way that distinguishes us, I think, from the other firms you're looking at, is the fact that I've been an elected official for nine terms, proves that we're committed to public service. I've also been a state official. I'm currently serving as a state official. Committed to doing the right thing. Not just, can I win this case now? The question is also, should we win this case in town? Did the town do something that it shouldn't have done? Should it be relooked at? We get to the right result, a fair result, the honest result. So, that's sort of a summary of what makes us different. If I were to. With me, I introduce some members of the team. I could bring everybody here.
Okay.
One is still in traffic.
We understand. Oh.
I just got here.
We have an arrival. Just in time.
So, if I could, let me ask Glenn Compliment.
I have a philosophy that to get the job done. It's very simple, and it worked when I headed Coleman and Page. My partner died, and I decided it was going to get larger, and I wanted to practice law. I didn't, my sense is that I train the people, and I don't need to do training here, because people working at the firm are out minimum for a decade, and they don't have to. My philosophy is that you want to keep the cost down. Way to do it is to control litigation. And in order to control litigation, I require that when I meet with somebody in the town who wants to bring suit or gets a suit, that if they don't ask me, I'm going to ask them, tell them what the likelihood test is going to be, and what it'll cost to get there. And then we can talk about all the alternatives. And in fact, I had a problem in the town of Cohasset that was an interesting issue with one of the department heads. And rather than rush off and work, I use that expression that I just told you about, and we've worked out something. And I spent under an hour, and I said, by the way, it's on the House. Just wanted to let you know that this is the way to do it. It's on the House. So far, I think it's, it'll be fine. So, that's my, what I, what I do.
Okay. We're going to have a follow-up about the litigation question further on, so hold that thought. And, yeah. Could I ask you to just briefly introduce everyone else? Because I think we're going to have a chance to let everyone speak in the other questions we ask. Paul, but I, I kind of want to give the opening statement, the five minutes, and then move on to the bigger questions, because I have a feeling all of, this whole group is going to want to help answer them. So, can we just introduce the others that are here, so we know?
Okay.
Yeah. Just name an area, so we know.
I'm Rod Lottman. I do contracts and security.
Thanks, Rod. Okay.
Hi, I'm Naomi Calhoun. I'm part of the litigation team.
Great. Thank you.
Well, I'm Jack Dolan. I'm here for labor and employment.
Great. Fabulous. Again, we have questions that I think you're all going to be able to help answer tonight, so I'm excited to get to know you. But just a little more general question about approach and services. Can you tell me your philosophy on working with our town's open meeting structure and our government structure when it comes to a Select Board, a Town Manager, you know, our, our board and commission structure and having open town meetings? What's your overall philosophy? And then what would you say are your main strengths you think of being representation for our town?
So, I'm the town meeting guy, and I'll answer it. Collaboration and mutual respect. So, for town meetings, we work with the Town Manager in preparing a warrant, and then we work with the Town Manager to prepare motions for the warrant, depending on how you all want that article to go. We work with department heads who have articles. We have a system that we have instituted here that I have recommended, which has me come to Town Hall and have office hours for a period of time for citizens to come in with citizen articles, and I'll help them, help them write it or guide them that this isn't a town issue, federal issue, or a state issue, or whatever, try to guide them. And then I work with the moderator to make sure that the town meeting runs well. I've been to 1,245. The 50 Cohasset Town Meeting.
That's a lot.
So, I've seen pretty much every parliament one way or the other.
Okay.
I covered everything.
What do you think is the overall strength of Brooks and Durencis to represent Cohasset?
So, institutional knowledge, the emphasis on practicality.
Okay.
Rather than theoretical, and the commitment to public service.
Great. All right. Our questions are going to go a little bit meatier as we go on. We are moving on to kind of communication and education aspects of the town, and I'm going to pass it over to Diane to ask that question.
Thanks. One of the strengths of Massachusetts municipal government, of course, is a robust board and commission structure, yet managing not only each board committee and commission, but member thereof, is particularly challenging, especially in a small town. If you could sort of describe your approach to both training and updating our citizen volunteers on substantive legal issues, their standing, what they're responsible for, as well as training them just generally on open meeting law? Can kind of summarize all of that? And what has worked and are best practices for making sure our, our committee members are supported?
So, just three months ago, Chair, we put on a training session on open meeting law and minutes, preparation of minutes. That's the kind of thing we do. Been somewhat modified and restricted because we haven't been able to have this kind of the give and take that we're used to. And essentially, there was a period of time in which none of our towns asked for any training sessions to be held. Everybody was working remotely. Nobody wanted, but the emphasis on that. Before 19, we did the open meeting law. We did the ethics. We did a variety of things. And while I'm thinking about it, labor side. Labor courses.
Spot up, please. Yeah. Everyone's welcome to talk.
So, this piggybacks on much of what Paul and Diane said. I think it's imperative for towns to become well-educated about what it's possibly helping to be, because that avoids costly problems. So, particularly in the labor and employment area where those problems often arise, that's one of the most litigious areas.
Yep.
I like to make sure that town officials are well-informed. So, I have probably 14, 15, 16 training programs that I've done on a variety of topics, ranging from things like what Paul mentioned, open meeting law and ethics, but also beyond that, how to be a department head, how to exercise managerial responsibility effectively and appropriately, those kinds of things. And I use a variety of means to do that. In person is obviously one of the best ways. Sometimes that'll involve role-playing, so people are. Webinars, if that's more effective, if you need to reach, you know, multiple shifts and that kind of thing. I often come in and do the same presentation at various times, so we can reach all the different shifts of public safety, depending on. So, I think it's critical to provide a wide range of education, a variety of means. And I'm also always happy to design a program targeting a particular need, and that wasn't too long.
No, that was good.
I just add to that, that he's not only a lawyer, but he actually served as a town administrator. Also has frontline experience actually doing the job.
It was actually amusing to my ears, talking about, you know, getting, getting opinions that say you can do this, or you can do that. Frustration without administrator, and I tried never to do that now.
Were you a lawyer first, or a lawyer? So, you were prepared at least, yeah.
I was, yes.
All right. Diane, do you have any follow-ups on that?
Oh, I'm good.
All right. Moving on to our next question, dealing with legal issues and litigation.
Yeah. I mean, Glenn had already kind of dove into it, but.
Yeah.
You know, the question that pops up all the time is, you know, whether, you know, when to pursue litigation, when to explore alternative options, which may include just not, you know, pursuing litigation at all, or not pursuing a case. Obviously, because litigating everything is not efficient, not cost-effective, not a good way to treat your public, as you said, sometimes is a right decision, sometimes is a wrong decision. Winning may not be always the right thing to do. So, can you tell us more about strategies that you employ to help guide boards like ours, or, you know, town leadership in making the decisions, especially if there's disagreements on scope or application of laws? And how, the best way forward considering, you know, cost concerns and enforcement concerns?
Let me take the first crack at that, which is that every time a lawsuit comes in, we look at it. The analogy I would use, like going to a doctor, and when you go to the doctor, he or she will look at the whole situation. So, we don't have a knee-jerk reaction, we're going to defend this, we're going to defend it to death. Because many times, when we look at it, we find, oops, the board misconstrued something, misinterpreted something. And so, we may come back and say, instead of defending this lawsuit, we want to remand it back to the board and have the board take a second look at it with some education from what the law is, and let's do it right. So, there's this initial filtering. I want a chance for you to meet our ace.
Aye.
What about the, what we do to?
In terms of litigation, obviously, you don't want to be dealing with me a lot. Litigation obviously means that, you know, you have a problem. Um, so, the outside is sort of taking a big look at what the big picture is, you know, what the strengths and what the weaknesses are, what is, what is it that you want to accomplish here? And then figuring out, you know, the best ways to do that. And so, it really takes into account, you know, sort of a comprehensive, you know, look at what you're trying to achieve, you know. It, obviously, it's all very case-specific, but depending on the situation, you know, we might think about, we might educate you about settlement options, or, you know, different, different alternatives, um, means of settling, besides just litigation. It's always very case-specific, so it's hard to sort of pin down any one thing in the abstract. But just know that we are always looking at every case, looking at all the details, to understand what's going on and where this goes, and what your different options are.
Okay.
Just to add to that, we have a situation in another town where the developer wanted to put him in rehabilitation center in a residential area. Residents were appalled and got quite organized. We settled it by having him not proceed with that project at that location, but rather we had a different location that we thought that worked, and that we helped him get that project up and running in a much better location, work better for the community. That way, it was a win-win for everybody. He was able to deal with good location. Those who were facing drug addiction had options. Every community should bear their responsibility towards helping people with drug addiction. And the residential neighborhood was left undisturbed. So, we try to put together those kinds of deals. We do not put together deals that involve payment of money, cash settlements, look at the history of what we've done. We don't recommend paying money on cases unless it's something truly extreme.
Okay. Do you have any follow-up?
I mean, the follow-up is just kind of the flip side, which is, you know, strategies that you employ to assist, you know, boards and officials to minimize inbound legal challenges, um, to decision, the active strategies that you, that you, you know, whether it be training or, you know, and reviewing of things that help, you know, us avoid bad decisions or things that could be challenged.
Just at a hearing two days ago, in which a board was trying to grapple with the Dover Amendment.
Yes. Tell us about it.
Lovely. You know, we, a little bit of a complex legal issue, so that's one of the kinds of things that we like to try to monitor, and be in touch with the boards, that they know what they're dealing with, and so when they actually get to these hearings, they're well-aware of the framework of the law, and they understand that it's their job to apply facts, but they have a solid understanding of what the law is and what they need to be looking for, whether that's, you know, a kind of formal opinion, or, you know, discussions with each different board member informally, however they want to do it. That's just definitely something we like to try to keep on top of, to make sure that people know what the law is.
As a former planning board member, it was a complete waste of my time to not know as a planning board member, what questions to ask at the public hearing. What am I looking for? And then to find out later, I should have asked for this, I should have done that, and I should have done that. But why didn't the lawyer who was trying to work there tell me these things before the hearing? We tried to do, she was meeting with the board in advance, well, at, at the hearing. She had given opinions before the hearing about what to look for. What is it that you're supposed to be asking? Why is there a public hearing to begin with? What facts are you looking for? So, you, you know what questions to ask. And if you don't have that, that guidance, literally, you're, you've wasted your time, because it'll end up, we'll look at it, we'll say, you violated the law. We're going to be remanded, and you have to redo it.
Okay. Wonderful. All right. Moving into a very critical and important topic to our town, the areas of land use and environmental issues. And Jean and Jack are going to start with that, beginning with Jean.
Hi, everyone. Hi, this is Jean Healy-Diffold. So, Cohasset is a small town with large land use and environmental needs, including with respect to potential comprehensive bylaw reform we are considering in the areas of land use and the environment next year, over this upcoming year. So, what I want to ask is, would the specific lawyers that will be handling the land use and environmental issues describe how you will ensure, including in light of your other clients that you have, that Cohasset, including its boards and commissions, the substantive expertise, timely responses, and training that we need with respect to reforming our bylaws, handling permitting decisions, and Paul, you alluded to this, including during a hearing or before, and handling litigation surrounding land use and environmental issues?
So, I'm going to answer that initially, because I do a lot of that and have helped rewrite bylaws in town. I didn't realize you were going to comprehensively rewrite the laws. There are a lot of good things that you have on the. Typically, the process is that we leave it to the policymakers. And I know here, I've been talked to about large houses and ledge as issues of. So, we've done language for those with, I'm not sure what. Tom Callahan Group, I know, was planning board, but then Tom got on the planning board.
Small town.
Yep.
What happened?
On that piece of it. But in terms of a total recodification. But in terms of a total recodification of the bylaw, one has specifically talked to me about that. And that's not really a training issue, that's more a clerical, logical kind of thing, where you want to put, you want to give each segment a title, and then you put them in alphabetical order, so that the citizens and the public can find things easily, and they know what they're, they're facing. So if you have a large home bylaw, you have it under L, so they know what to look for. It's, it's not really, uh, not really training. So the, the land use team includes myself, but also John, who's here. We should say a few words, and Pierre Eustef, who's not here.
How you doing, Chris? Hey, everybody. So, yeah, um, so my primary responsibility at Brooks and Durensis is to handle most real estate matters that come across. Paul gives me direction on, and then I have an associate dedicated that is also there to assist in all the, a lot of the detail work, and carrying the ball forward, so we can get back to towns with respect to the requests timely and adequately. Um, with respect to what Paul was just outlining, that you're concerned about, you know, the direction would come from Paul, working with you and the leaders of the town, uh, and then we would be the detailed people behind the scenes. One of the biggest, uh, assets, I think, that the firm also has, is a person who's not here as well, on the environmental side, Dan Deutsch, who is a very, very adept at environmental issues. He's both thorough, reader, and detailed person I know. I know I do many, many real estate transactions, and we have towns, and we have developers and whatnot. And many times, environmental issues come up and arise, that it's a language all of its own, it's a field all unto itself, and he has the know-how and the experience to know where to look, know how to get the answers, and then to be able to translate that for myself, and the people I'm answering to, as to the solution, and the hoping needs to be resolved in the situation. So we do have that additional resource in our firm, aside from myself dealing with the usual and ordinary land transactions and matters. Is that, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, partially.
Go ahead. Follow-up.
So, I, as you know, planning boards turnover, you know, new people come on board to commissions and boards, and I guess one question I would have from you following from that is, how do we ensure that those boards have the training that they need, whether generally, or when there's a project that's coming up, that might be controversial, that might be litigious, and we need to make sure that they have the support vis-à-vis counsel? Can you describe how your firm works with, on a day-to-day basis? Because, you know, these hearings are coming up every week, twice a week, three times a week? Like, what, can you describe, just as a practical matter, what the representation is that you will provide?
Right, yeah, so I think that the best thing about having this type group is that Paul is constantly in touch with me and considers to what's going on in every town work. And irrespective of turnover, and things that may change, we document things. So if a request comes in from, from the town for a particular social or whatnot, we all know, we're all aware of it, we all know what's going on, he gives the direction as to what to do with it, and then we respond to whomever that might be. With respect to training, I think that the best thing, especially what you're talking about, which might be particular litigation-sensitive type situations, you don't know where they're going to go, I think in-person, or Zoom, depending on, this fall. I certainly hope we can keep it in-person, but, uh, you know, Zoom meetings as necessary, to bring the appropriate people, and to make sure everybody's on the same page. And that's, you know, that comes from my business, recording. Um, and that's the most important thing, is communication internally, and with the client. So whether it's technically training, or whether it's just keeping abreast of what the situation is that the town is contending with, and what it asks us to do, and what's happening, and irrespective of the chair changes, or position changes, that we have that line of communication open and, and continuous, until the situation's resolved. And that's the tightness of our group, I think, in a very large respect. There's not too many days go by, that we're all not talking about various things that aren't on the table.
So I'd like to add to that.
Yeah.
Just heard from the litigator, how she was at a meeting dealing with this childcare facility, the application of the Dover amendment. It's incumbent on your board, or your committee, to tell us, you don't know how a childcare facility fits into the Dover amendment, seems to be talking about education. And if you don't know that there's another paragraph that says, oh, by the way, this also applies to childcare facilities, you don't know that, you could be committing error. But we don't know that, whether you know that, or you don't know it, we don't even know if it's on your docket. So you have a planning director, you have a town manager, you have a chairman of a committee, and at some point, the way it has worked in the past here and other towns, we get a call from the chair of the committee saying, hey, we have this issue coming up, we're not sure how to handle it. Can you train us, explain to us, what is it, what work, what are the standards? And we'll, we'll do that, we'll put on anything that's needed for whatever subject is before a board or committee. So whether it's a board of appeals, or a planning board, or Concom, or whatever it is, if there's a request for help, we'll provide that help.
In my experience, there's, there's two very, very distinct types of town leaders and town officials that I've dealt with. And there are these extremely experienced, long-term people that know much more than I do, right? Maybe not with respect to real estate financing, or a particular thing, but they generally have a body of knowledge in their head that's more than I know in general. And then you have newbies, because people retire, people transition out, people, you know, elections change, all these different things.
Yep.
And they come with a question that I'm like, wow, does that person doesn't know what they, you know?
They don't know what they're doing.
It's a new thing, it's novel, and it's at that moment that it's our obligation to be able to educate, our obligation to train, to the extent necessary, not calling it training, but just inform, I, I think that would be the better way to call it. Um, and we do that as necessary, and, and without hesitation.
Okay, move to Jack. All right. Thank you. Diving deeper still into this issue, because it is really important to our town. Jack has our next question.
Yeah, well, thank you all for coming, we appreciate, um, coming down to this most special place.
It's nice.
It is.
Every time I come down here, it's beautiful.
Well, brings me to my.
Good transition.
He walked right into that.
Yeah, he did.
The challenge that we as a board, who have a very unique community, and I know everybody believes that, and I'm sure with good reason, preserving it, it's a challenge. You've alluded to, like, the large home review, ledge removal, these things that you've already, as a firm, you know, dealt with. Wetlands protection, we have, um, ledge doesn't drain, we have clay, we have salt marsh, we have a variety of, of geological challenges. Are there some things that you could discuss, in which you've actually stepped to the plate, and either crafted a decision, or saw a challenge, and worked its way through, so we can see exactly, you know, your law for inaction, solving specific problems in either Cohasset or Townsend?
So I would say, we've been this for twenty-five years, so we, you were on the Conservation Commission, and you saw, I believe, when you were on the Conservation Commission, we were still representing the Conservation Commission. We got a memo sent.
I was in the middle of all the big lawsuits.
So we have, we have written plenty of, assisted in writing decisions. What we try very carefully to do is not become the board. It's very easy for me, as a, as a long-term public official myself, want to say, it is obvious you should say yes to this, or no to this, that's, that's not our business. You have to decide where you want to go. And then when you tell us where you want to go, we would ask you to give us a draft of where it is that you want to go, and we'll perfect the draft. So we have, we have done that for the town, you've seen us do that. And you've seen, by and large, Cohasset has done very well in the courts.
And I, and I'll just add to that, fortunately for me, I'm not usually involved in litigation. Fortunately for me, developers trying to build things, but I have been involved on numerous occasions for towns, other than Cohasset, and Cohasset, and private parties, all over the place, dealing with, whether it's new easements, whether it's very, you know, particular rights between parties, whether it's dealing with easements for sewage and whatnot, going through very sensitive properties, where you have people that are extremely concerned about aesthetics, and touching anything, and how it's going to affect them, and what it means to the town, and then it's going out to the ocean, so there's other regulations that get involved. And we've navigated those things, from beginning to end, uh, to the satisfaction of both the, the town parties, and whoever might be involved, Conservation Commissions, whatever it might be. So, you know, aside from Paul's wealth and experience, maybe he could speak to you directly about particular events, I, I get, I have a more broad view, both on the private side and on the town side, with respect to all those sort of, kind of things you're talking about. Because Nantucket is very particular.
Yeah.
I have been dealing with a couple of things on Nantucket, for multiple parties on a particular street, in a particular location, you know, needed to be done a particular way, and we did it. It's just thinking, communication, and time.
When a house is worth twenty million, spending a couple hundred thousand on a lawyer is not the biggest worry.
Jack, do you have any follow-up?
No, I think that's.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
All right. So, I'm going to let you just give any other thoughts or feelings you have. We've tried to cover the wide scope of the questions we originally submitted to you, to get a good feel for your vibe, and your personalities, and who's going to be helping us on certain issues. So, really, this is just a last chance, we have a, you know, a few more minutes left. If you want to tell us anything you think that we haven't asked, or that we should know, or that, you know, you feel like helps best represent Brooks and Durensis for us.
So, make sure that everybody, yes, everybody has spoken. I would say, a few things you didn't ask me, one would be, how do we save costs? Try to save costs, and we are very conscious of costs, partly because, as a board member myself, it's getting these legal bills. Approved a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar legal bill.
Wow.
What I voted for. So there are some things that we do, like, we're, we're working on a project in connection with the harbor, and we asked the developer to prepare the paperwork for us to look at. And, uh, I had told Chris yesterday that the papers were coming yesterday, the papers never came. And it's sort of been the story for, for a while now. But the point is, not, not to complain about anybody, but to have the initial work done by the private sector for us to look at, saves the community time and money, at the end of the day. In litigation, where someone has obtained a permit, and gets sued by others, where that person has the permit, we tend to let that person defend the permit, both because they have the knowledge as to why they applied for it, what they're going to do, and so on, and because it saves the community money. It's also safe, that if the worst case, a permit overturned by the courts, then the applicant has to come back to the board with the revised project. So nothing gets built without the boards involved. So we think it's pretty safe to let the lawyer do most of the work on that, with us monitoring it, unless we're told there's, there's some defining, maybe investment in, in our policy position. We try to save money that way. We also try to save money, as, as I've mentioned, when I took an orientation when you first get elected, just to call first before you leap. If you would just take that moment to ask the question, can I do this? Or is this legal? Is this ethical, what I'm about to do? And give us a chance to give you some advice before you do something. There's an old saying, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Save you a pound of, of legal fees. Just ask the question first, we try to encourage, we try to encourage that. We care about the town. Actually, I have a lot of friends here, I've had a lot of nights, I've worked, I've met some wonderful people.
Who are the bad ones? Tridem is a slow-hanging issue.
It's a public meeting, yeah. Being broadcast.
Like in town.
I know who they are.
Yeah, no, there's a lot of people I like. It's a wonderful place, so I am quite invested in it, uh, and would very much like to continue to serve.
And I, and I'd just add to Paul's comments, and they're heartfelt. We, we like to work with the people in the towns that we work with. I've enjoyed working with Cohasset a few times, I've had the occasion to touch upon things here. Um, I think real estate is becoming much, much more important. Issues that you talked about, environment, is becoming much, much more important, uh, much more intense than it used to be before. And so if we are prepared for that, we, we enjoy the practice of it, and making sure that we're protecting the client and the town's interests with respect to these various things that are happening now, with the, the preciseness of real estate, especially in little towns, it didn't matter much, you know, uh, it's becoming exceedingly expensive now. Property is worth so much more money, rights and whatnot. Uh, so I think we'd be delighted to continue to, to assist, and, and in any way possible.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So, I think, out of necessity, we're all sort of siloed, I'm the labor person, we have the litigator. But, you know, in a firm, it doesn't tend to be quite that siloed. We, we obviously would communicate with one another. I mention this only because Jack's question resonated with me, having served as town administrator in two coastal communities in Massachusetts. Uh, so when you were talking about preserving it, and the environmental challenges, you know, I've dealt with having to find alternatives to septic systems, um, in County Marion.
Wow.
I've dealt with a concentrated animal feedlot polluting the Westport River. So even though I'm the labor guy, um, there's cross-pollination, there's the benefit of, of what Paul mentioned at the beginning, which is really a lifetime commitment to pollute the water.
Okay, great. Yes, last word. No.
Can. But, um, I was hired by the federal government a while back, to do the Fort Devens reuse plan, and that had just about everything imaginable that you could. Uh, uh, our meetings would go to at least two, three in the morning. And I have to, I'm not good with directions, because, um, it was before, you know, the, the cellphone wouldn't have helped you. And go in circles, because there's only two exits. Eventually, you'll find your way out. But, but as a practical matter, uh, we are cross- But, uh, but as a practical matter, uh, we are cross trained too. So we know when, not just one little area, if I'm an expert in this area, I can do this. I'd be a little nervous because we also have to keep people happy. And when I, when I say that, I'll just be very brief. I don't beat up on people. If I'm going to go, if I have somebody that doesn't want to sit in it, taking advantage, I will. But if I have a person who's a resident here paying real estate taxes and files for an statement and gets denied and then goes to the tax board, I don't come in like gangbusters, uh, on it. There are nice ways of handling it. And I usually am able to talk to them saying, well, you know, let, let's see if we can get rid of it at this level. And what do you have for, for insurance? Um, so let's assume that the house burned down. The land's worth money, you know, so we started looking at it and, and giving them the assesses. And, and, um, how to deal with the.
Yep. We understand. Any final words? Well, we know this isn't even a town that's easy to get to and we really appreciate your willingness to come in person. It was really exciting to think about having it be personalized and meeting everyone in person. And I know Zoom might have been easier, but we are grateful for you coming and talking to us tonight and giving us all this information. So seriously, cartmel thank you to all of you. See?
There's also more than two ways out of town.
Yeah. There's multiple ways.
Well, there's the ocean.
Yes.
Right. But, but we got you out of there fast, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
I was going to congratulate Chris for making sure no questions were asked of me.
Chris had nothing to do with it. Yeah.
Tourer commission.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good work, but right.
We have a lot of that coming up too, so. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a great night.
We appreciate it and have a good rest of your night. All right, 5:30? Yeah, 5:45. We have people. Yes, so we, yeah. Yep, quick bathroom break before our next, our next one's at 5:45. So, yeah, quick question to the board. Do we think that first round went smoothly? Does anyone want to change their question up a little bit?
Can we change our question?
No, not really.
Not very much, yeah.
I mean, in terms of wording, in terms of wording, not in terms of substantive content, in terms of the wording.
The only question I have is, and I think, I think I know the answer, but there were answers that I would have liked to have followed up on that weren't my questions.
I know.
I don't know if we can.
And I didn't, I just didn't know if that would get too messy.
Yep. I, 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 I think.
I thought about that. I thought about opening that can of worms and then I just wanted to.
Yeah.
All right. Good first round. Bathroom break, snack break.
All my snacks are back at my desk.
And Jack, I.
With the open Zoom.
Jack, and I remember you were the one that said you wanted this to be in person first.
Not at this meeting.
Make sure we're unmuted. Is audio back on?
The background's a little.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. We are now moving on to our second firm we're talking to tonight. This is Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lehane. And we're honored that you came in person. I know this is a little harder to do than Zoom, but we really wanted that personalized deal and we're really excited to be able to be back in person. So thank you to all of you for coming tonight. And as you know, you know, from time to time, we think it's really important for the town to review our legal representation and get a feel for if we're a good match and to get your feelings on a lot of different issues related to the town. So we just want to start with a five minute opening statement and introductions of everyone who's here. And then each of us has one question prepared for you. So go ahead, introduce yourselves, opening statement.
Thank you so much. It's lovely to be here. Uh, as you, many of you know, I'm Attorney Karis North with Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lehane. And I will be the lead counsel on the municipal side with, uh, much of the team behind me. Um, uh, and so we would have Cindy Amara as co-lead and, uh, principal backup on land use, environmental, municipal. We have Peter Mello, uh, as principal backup on litigation. And David DeLuca as lead on the, uh, special services licensing and things like that. And then here with me is, uh, Kier Wachtahauer on, uh, labor and employment. And he has Rachel Mills. Uh, and Kier will be the lead with, uh, one other attorney who has, uh, long scheduled bargaining tonight and couldn't be here this evening.
Okay.
And Rachel, uh, will be with you. So thank you very much. We are very pleased to be here tonight to talk about, um, continuing our relationship and perhaps expanding our relationship, uh, in delivery of legal services for the town of Cohasset. We feel like we're a really good fit for this town, uh, for a variety of very specific reasons that we laid out in some detail in our, uh, response. And in our supplemental responses to the RFQ, and I'm, I'm not going to go back over any of that. Uh, I don't think anybody wants to. But I'm just going to hit a couple of highlights and then I'm going to have Kier say a few things as well. Uh, our team approach allows us to be efficient and responsive and also to have, uh, someone with ultimate responsibility for you all, um, with respect to the delivery of legal services. So it's a benefit for you and it also makes sure that there's consistency among the approach with our team. Uh, our team is, uh, very experienced with deep backgrounds in all areas of municipal law as well as labor and employment law. Uh, we work with a variety of communities, um, and we've addressed many, many issues. That doesn't mean that we've addressed every single issue because everything is new and different and very, uh, dependent on facts. But we have, uh, a good background and understanding and we know where to go. If we don't have the answer at the tip of our fingers, we know how to answer the question efficiently and responsibly and respectfully. Uh, we have a large database of documents and we also work very collaboratively. We meet regularly, um, uh, not just in the halls, but we meet on a monthly basis to just talk about each particular issue and go over, you know, things that we might have with a particular client that might be of general interest or to see who else is working on those particular issues. So there's a lot of collaboration amongst ourselves. Um, and then we are successful. We have gotten excellent results for our clients in a variety of areas, in litigation, in permitting. Um, you know, we try to set up the client for the best possible outcome by being proactive and, and trying to get to a decision that actually avoids challenges or puts the client in the best possible position to resolve challenges when they come forward. Um, so that's, uh, my brief overview. We're really excited about this opportunity and I will turn it over to Kier. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, thanks, Karis. Thanks, everyone. I'm really happy to, happy to be here. I, I think, I think you folks may, may know us more for our municipal law, uh, work and experience. And, um, so I'll just spend a little time. We were actually founded the firm as a labor practice in 1806, a little before me. But we have a very robust practice that, that covers, um, I think it's fair to say primarily public sector law, municipalities and really all public sector entities in Massachusetts, whether at the, at the state level, local levels, um, housing authorities, sheriff's offices, districts of all, of all sorts. It's, um, it's extensive and we also cover a lot of private, uh, labor and employment law, which I actually find to be a critical element to our practice in, in that area. Uh, almost all of the laws, uh, that cover private sector entities, cover public sector entities. I'm not sure everyone is fully aware of that all the time. And we have a lot of experience, uh, kind of across the board. And that's, I think, one of the things we kind of bring to the table, um, sector. Um, just a little bit about myself, I've, I've been doing this for about 10 years now. I'm, I'm one of the partners in the labor, labor area. And I would be happy to kind of talk to you a little more about what that means in terms of our approach. I did, I think, some pretty good explanations in our, in our, um, submissions, um, already. But it's a big part of how we practice. It's, it's, it's critical for us to have the relationship with our, with our client. And we want to know, just like, uh, you probably want to know who you can call, well, it's the lead attorney. We're going to want to know, I think that relationship is absolutely critical so that, uh, communication is always present, uh, the information is passed back and forth, um, to allow us to serve you. Um, with that said, we're also attorneys, fellow attorneys. Uh, and it's, we have this breadth, you know, we have the municipal law, uh, we have the labor law. Uh, and those two things are almost always going together, especially in areas of governance, ethics, um, open meeting law. You, you can't, you can't silo yourself. And so to Karis' point, you know, I, and I've been asked this question, why do I like working at my firm? It's because we get to work with great people and we get to collaborate, which I think gets better results for, for clients. Um, not to say that we're billing for meetings or anything like that. But, you know, I'll give you a, a great example. Just actually, just the other day, Peter Mello and I, he was working on an ethics issue. Uh, it necessarily involved a review of a collective bargaining agreement. Well, Peter's not going to spend two hours going through the collective bargaining agreement and research, uh, that particular aspect of labor law. Knocked on my door, five minutes later, have the solution on that aspect of labor law. And that's, that's kind of how we work and I think it works, works really well. So, um, I will, um, not say much more other than what I've already said, but obviously happy to answer questions and, uh, anything that might be generated from what we've said so far.
You've, you've already started to answer the first question I had, which is what are your strengths in working with a town like ours, a town unique like ours? And also what's your overall approach or philosophy to our town style and our form of government? With a select board and an open town meeting and a town manager and the boards and committee structures that we have. So say a little bit more about just your overall philosophy and approach for a town like ours and why you think you're a good fit for that.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you want to, do you want to start, Karis? I can jump in.
Yeah, that sounds great. So, uh, we work with a lot of communities with this very same structure. And we're used to sort of the differing areas of responsibility within a town, but understanding that there are big picture things that you have to be aware of and understand. Um, and that, you know, we ultimately, you know, you are the select board, you select. But then under your Town Manager Act, you know, the town manager has the ability to also work with attorneys in litigation. So we need to have sort of a, a, a efficient point of contact, whether it be the chair of the select board or the, um, the town manager. And then, um, obviously work with you all on the warrant and the town manager on the warrant, the finance committee on the warrant. We have lots of experience with complicated warrants and long town meetings. Um, and again, we all bring various expertise to the table. So if there is, you know, um, some kind of article that perhaps involves, uh, an area of, uh, land use or, um, affordable housing and something that, that Cindy has worked on, then we may, you know, ask her for her opinion about that particular piece. But the warrant will ultimately get signed off on by town council, um, which would be Cindy and myself. Um, so we continue to have this collaborative approach. We, um, we have all this deep bench of experience. We work very well together. As Kier said, you know, we see each other on the phone, we work together, we talk on the phone, we call each other and ask each other questions to share that information. And most of that doesn't usually get billed at the end of the day because we're, you know, bringing ourselves up to speed on a particular issue. Um, with respect to the structure and the governance, um, because there are multiple areas that we are responsive to, we do try to be efficient and try to keep the, um, the communication, you know, not every board member and, um, not every, uh, department head. So we try to figure, we try to set out who, who are the ones who can request legal services. Or, you know, if the scope of legal services has changed. For, for example, I've done some work with the Board of Health, which wasn't in the original scope. Um, and that had to get approved by the town manager before I would do that work. And, you know, I would say, have you run it by Chris before I can actually, you know, engage in the work. So we want to use your resources wisely and efficiently. Um, and then we want to make sure we get the right team member to work on that particular question. And, and then it may be, you know, click, Karis, we did this, um, and this is going on and you should know about it if somebody else is working on it, or I may be working on it myself. Or if it's a labor issue, it would go to Kier or somebody on his team.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's well said. I can speak just a little about labor and employment law and just my experience. I, I find that, as I said, communication is, is critical and every, every client's going to be a little different. Um, in the labor and employment world, um, I think a lot of the issues can be very granular, day to day. And just as a matter of practice, I, I find myself getting to know very well department head. And of, and of course, you know, we have to, we want to be cognizant of what our scope is and, and who has authority to contact us. But it's not uncommon for the, you know, the chief of police or the fire or EDW to have my number and call me when an issue can be addressed quickly on my cell. Get it, address it, and, and that's often how it works.
You said communications is critical and we have a communication education.
Segue.
Question, segue to Diane. So perfect.
And because we're trying to be consistent about the questions, some of them you've already answered. But, um, one of the strengths of Massachusetts municipal government, as you know, is the robust board committee commission structure. Yet managing and supporting each board committee commission, BCC, um, and member of each board committee and commission is challenging, particularly for a small town. So, uh, two-part questions. Describe your overall approach to training, supporting, and updating our citizen volunteers on substantive legal issues and their roles and responsibilities. And also best practices, um, for communication channels with and among boards, committees, commissions, and the town manager and the select board.
Sure. So, um, let me start with the second part first. Uh, the, the best practices for communication is board chair. Um, and then, uh, uh, support department head, um, and then town manager or select board chair as needed is sort of my preferred approach. Obviously, that doesn't mean I'm not going to take a call from someone. Um, but, you know, if I've gotten a call from a board member and that, you know, I've already discussed this with your chair, I'll refer them back to the chair. I'm not going to, you know, do the, you know, go through that time and energy. And then if there needs to be a, a discussion with a larger group, happy to sit down and facilitate that. But I would prefer that it come through the chair again for efficiency and to make sure that everybody is on the same page. So that gets you to, um, the, how do you communicate and disseminate information and bring people on the speed? I think you have to be proactive and you, good communication is absolutely essential. So it's, it's much more useful to know what's coming down the pike in advance and meet with the board chair, the senior staff that are representing, and go through what are the potential legal issues? Do you have any legal questions? What may be coming up down the pike? And then talk through the resolution so everybody is on the same page. And so you're not giving, you know, advice to, you know, to department head A and committee chair B and committee staff person C. They all hear differently or they all ask slightly different questions. But I think the best thing is to try to bring everybody together and have that singular conversation and work through all the questions and issues in advance. And then the board members are, and the staff are prepared for that board meeting. Um, we can attend those board meetings if requested. We don't make it a practice to attend every single one unless requested because again, we want to be efficient with your time. But we will ask, do you need legal services for the upcoming meeting? What's on your agenda that's coming forward that you may need legal services and support for? Um, and then try to work that in. I also really believe in education as part of counseling. So it's really important to be, when I'm explaining legal issues, to try to give context and not just answer the very specific question. Obviously we're going to do, but also to try to provide broader context. Um, and say, you know, in this context, you know, the answer is A, but, you know, it might be B and C here and that's something you should think about down the road. Um, I also think it's important to understand what board responsibilities are and have done training on board responsibilities, training on specifics of, um, you know, specific subject matter areas. And then obviously open meeting law training, public records training. And that's something that should be done on a regular basis and there's some responsibility for the town clerk. And that, and that we have also said, when we notice that there are issues, there seems to be confusion about how agendas are being done or confusion about how minutes are being drafted, then it's our responsibility to say, I think we need to sit down and have some conversations about how you do this effectively and correctly. So we have to be proactive and then we need you all to be proactive as well, to ask those questions and ask when you want advice so that it's a two-way communication street.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add in, I, I may, maybe just to follow up with you, what you, Karis. Uh, we're big fans of training and education. It's a big part of what we do and, and we do a lot of it. Quite a lot of it. I, I speak very regularly and we do it in a lot of different contexts. We, we speak to, to groups and, and, you know, industry groups and things like that. But we absolutely do tailored trainings, um, and that includes for board members. It includes for officials. It includes for all employees. And that includes for board members, it includes for officials, it includes for all employees. You know, I'll speak more to labor and employment, but certainly, you know, I've done trainings on ethics and open meeting and governance issues, and then more generally, management approaches in the labor and employment context, which I think can be appropriate in some, some contexts for, for board members. I would recommend sexual harassment training for every single official, board member, employee, in every city. And we do that. And that kind of just goes hand in hand with our approach of, the right approach to practice law, it's the right approach for entities to work with their attorneys. It's about prevention, it's about making sure we're following the law and doing the right thing before problems, before problems arise. I love focusing on that as part of my practice.
Great, thank you. Can you follow up for a second?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, Corey, you're next.
I want to copy your format, Diane, a little bit with the two-part question, and you've been feeling it very well, so I think it's a good way to go. So, you know, something that we deal with often, and Kieris, I know there's been recent stuff that we've been dealing with in town that you've been involved with, but the decision whether to pursue litigation or seek alternative methods. You know, litigating every case is not efficient and not a good use of time, and also not good for our residents. And sometimes, litigating a case isn't the right answer regardless of the outcome. But, what strategies do you employ to help towns like us decide when to pursue litigation versus pursue resolutions through other means, including no litigation whatsoever? Especially when there are disagreements about the scope of law, the application of laws? And the flip coin of that for the two-part question is, how do you be proactive in preparing us to avoid litigation when it comes to our decisions, orders, bylaws, and, and meeting articles?
I can, I'll drop in briefly there, but I, yeah, I, I'll tell you what, I think one of the first things we all have to be thinking about, and I think, I think we all have a duty, regardless of cost, and I like to think of litigation in terms of cost. It's a, it's a business decision. It's a question of the responsible use of public funds, really. Because in the end, litigation turns and falls almost always on, on what it's going to cost. That's what a settlement's going to be, that's what it's going to take, litigate the case in the first place. So, you know, we have extensive litigation experience across all areas, not just municipal and construction, on labor and employment, any type of civil litigation. We're very, very comfortable in the area. And I, and one of the first things I'm going to be doing is talking about what's this going to fall from, both in terms of the initial stages, because that's, that's an important, I think, separate question that has to be asked. But, across the board, so we can take a big picture, what's it going to take to get to a resolution in terms of litigation? And then, what alternatives are there? Whether it's, whether it's settlement or, you know, some type of alternative dispute resolution, which I can speak more about, but I think we're all fans of. I think it's, it's the right thing in, as a cost perspective in, in many situations. And so, that's often how I would look at it, and especially in the public sector where I, I think, again, we're talking about public money here.
I think, thanks, Kier. I think I would add to that, which is sort of the second part of your question, which is, it's really very, they're really tied, those two pieces of the question. So, you want to put your, your client in the best possible situation anyway, so that you try to avoid litigation. That's the first strategy, is to avoid litigation.
That's the training.
That's, that's the training. That's the working on crafting the decision, so you write a good decision. So, that's the review of the bylaws, so the bylaws get approved appropriately. So, that's the first piece of that as well. So, you've got to put the work in upfront. And again, that's where you be proactive, where you need the communication, so you know this decision is coming down the road, or this application is pending. There may be these people who are interested, and, you know, this group is going to be unhappy about this decision, this group is going to be unhappy about this decision. How do we write the best decision possible? Which you have to do regardless. But, so, that's how you approach the, the being proactive piece. And then, if you are in the situation where you have litigation, then you do what Kier says, is you talk about and you think about the cost and the various approaches through the various stages of litigation, and really what it's going to get you at the end of the day. And you have to do that balancing approach all the time. And again, all of us here today have had extensive litigation experience, spent a lot of time in court or in arbitrations or in, you know, administrative fora as well. We've done a lot of evidentiary proceedings on all the bus. So.
Thanks, Kier.
All right, Jean has our next question.
I am Jean Haley Dippel. Thank you all for coming. I'm going to ask this, appreciating that you've already answered this in part with respect to other questions, but Cohasset is a small town. We have large land use and environmental needs, as you probably know, including with respect to potential comprehensive bylaw reform that we're looking at and considering in the future. And so, we want to ensure that the specific lawyers proposed to represent Cohasset will ensure that we, including our boards and commissions, receive substantive, timely, and responsive land use and environmental advice and litigation representation. So, for the attorney who will be handling our land use and environmental issues, we'd like to hear about both the, their experience and also the practical approach, the day-to-day approach that he or she will employ to help Cohasset meet those goals, particularly in light of other clients that you may be managing, like Situate and Natick, and also in the context of reforming our land use and environmental bylaws, number one. Number two, handling our permitting decisions with respect to the permitting boards like Concom, Planning Board, ZBA. And number three, when addressing litigation in the land use and environmental context. Sorry, I know it's compound.
Yeah, fine, I got it. So, you and I are both lead on the land use and environment. And we both have extensive experience in land use and environmental, from Concom and wetlands issues to solid waste and hazardous waste issues. We both did this work as lawyers before we were lawyers, since we've been lawyers, and we've always had sort of an environmental law and land use to both of our, to our practices during our entire profession. And that necessarily includes a litigation practice, a permitting practice, and a compliance practice. There is a lot more detail in, in the submission. I'm not going to read you our resume, but I'll refer you back to that. But, in terms of then, process, so we, we have the two of us as lead, and we have worked very successfully with the planning board, the Concom, the ZBA, in how our approach to projects has been sort of project by project. So, I've worked on some, and Cindy has worked on some, we each have the lead, but we are each in communication with each other. And so, then, when you have one lawyer, you have somebody who is ultimately has the depth of knowledge and understands all of the issues for that particular project, instead of going back and forth and back and forth, and I was at this meeting, you were at that meeting, and you follow the project through the, the, the board review process. And then, if it would go to litigation, you would follow the project through to litigation as well, or any kind of challenge. So, that is how we intend to work and how we have worked very successfully so far, with some backup from some other folks, like Attorney Mello has helped us on a couple of projects. Peter Mello behind us, Attorney Mello, and Attorney Kevin Freitag, who's not here today, is part of our municipal group. And then, we have some real estate lawyers who have worked with us. Peter McNulty, who sometimes comes in and advises and gives us help on some transactional things and also some other pieces. So, we have, again, all of those pieces to the team in place with the lead, the lead people who are able to have that more depth of knowledge and understanding and develop that relationship with the individual boards and the staff for the boards as well. Let me ask Cindy, is there anything else that you would like to add to, to that response?
The only thing I would say is, I really appreciate that we've started to really work well as an internal land use department, and with the different boards, and were able to get a sense now of what a given board may be likely to do, or how would we do that. And it's become easier for us to type, you know, fairly available, because we are now both becoming much comfortable with this board that are now in charge of that. In terms of our expertise, we're, we're very, we've got a lot of talent back on. I have personally, a twin track, David, the white, the white, the, the, the planning board as well, some work with the town, putting in place open state plans, um, what your, your, byway plan. So, we're done from the litigation of four decisions, one of the things that finds can, or, or evolve and is happening, is to be able to actually review decisions and help edit something before it becomes finalized, so we can help change some of the things that they do. So, I think we're in a position.
Thank you. With respect to the, the bylaw review, I think, again, the fact that we do work in other communities gives us some insight into what may work well in Cohasset, or Cohasset may have an idea that perhaps one of our communities has tried, and it's either been successful or not, but we can have, we have some experience, because we work in Natick and Situate and Milton and, you know, Danvers and Norwood. And while we don't have primary responsibility for all those communities, you know, all of us at various times work in each other's communities. So, we have some understanding of the structure and the bylaws and how town meeting runs, because we also, in spring town meeting sessions, when it gets really busy, sometimes we cover for each other. So, you know, we have all experienced a lot of different communities' approach, and that gives us broad knowledge to draw on. And then, we have the understanding of, we've been working in Cohasset since 2018 now. So, we have a good understanding of how the town works, what are the important issues in the community, what are the, you know, the, the more flashpoints, and, and what are things that are, you know, less controversial that we can help work with.
So, thank you, thank you for that. I did want to ask one follow-up question. So, with respect to land use litigation, and I'm not going to ask the same question about litigation generally, but with respect to land use litigation, have you had experiences where it was important for the town to litigate these issues for the purpose of deterrence and also clarifying the law? Could you talk a little bit about that aspect, because we really didn't get into much with respect to your approach with land use litigation?
So, again, I think we talked generally about litigation. Land use litigation is sometimes a different animal than general civil litigation or other issues, because you're not necessarily dealing with money at the end of the day, you're dealing with how a piece of property is going to be used or not going to be used, which isn't necessarily something you can reduce a dollar figure. So, you have to be able to think differently about your approach when you're dealing with land use litigation. We have worked with many, many communities where we have had to, to litigate because it was important to uphold the, the law. And the, you know, we've dealt, there are scoff laws everywhere, and we've dealt with scoff laws here in Cohasset, and there are scoff laws everywhere. And so, it, it takes time and energy and commitment and patience to go through that process. And so, sometimes that process is long and detailed, and you have to be willing to stay at force, or you have to know why you're deciding to jump out of that approach. But you need, we can give you that big picture from the beginning and say, this is the best approach, and this is what it's going to get you at the end of the day if you do A or if you do B or if you do C. So, we have enough experience to be able to have a sense of where any particular land use case is going to go, and the, sort of the risks and benefits of managing that case and what you might get out of it at the end of the day. And then, you still ultimately have to make business decisions because you're using resources. But sometimes, yes, you do litigate to uphold a point. We've even, you know, I do some labor work with some other communities, and we have litigated some, you know, human resources decisions that went the other way because the select board felt that it was an important statement to make about the behavior that was underlying the litigation, that they didn't want that behavior in their workforce. And so, you do the same thing sometimes in land use litigation as well. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Jack, you're up.
Thank you all for, for coming. Kind of echoing what's also been said, the underlying issue in Cohasset is we are a somewhat fragile, small town with a very unique, at least we think so, character. And I think all the select board wants to maintain that, and legal services enforcing the laws are very important to that. And we, we've spent a lot of time developing our own local bylaws and being, having expertise. So, you know, if you, you've kind of already described your expertise in some of these, but we do ask the same question of everybody. So, I'll ask you the same question that you've probably answered, but in fairness to all the other law firms. But, so, you know, your expertise in decisions, orders, and cases that you played a major role in, in crafting and involving, and, but, you know, you talked a lot about in theory, are there concrete cases handled which would illustrate in which your law firm took that theory and concretely put it in, in case, and like wetlands protection, you know, the, enforcing the laws, and issues to do with building and et cetera and so on. So, just some specific examples of, you did maybe a signature piece of work, not necessarily in Cohasset, but, or maybe in another community, certainly if you've done something in Cohasset, that would be even more.
Yeah, so, there are two things that come to mind. One Cohasset example is the Rustway case, where the initial decision of the Concom was challenged and overturned by the court. And then, we went back and actually, after thinking through the, the order and really analyzing the order, advised the commission to hold another hearing. It was essentially a remanded decision, and go through the process again, and essentially take a second shot at writing that order, which I worked on extensively with the chair of the Conservation Commission. That second order ultimately, the, the, first of all, the applicant challenged the ability of the town to do just that, and the court said, nope, they can do that. And then, and then the applicant ultimately didn't challenge that second order. It was a strong, well-written order, didn't challenge it. And so, the project that was very concerning to members of the commission never got built. Ultimately, I believe they came back and filed for a modified project that I believe has been approved. So, that's a, a strong result for the town based on our analysis of the law and our experience in writing decisions, in getting a decision that they didn't even challenge, which I think is a, was a pretty good outcome. Also, personally, and I'll ask Cindy as well, I worked on, again, to, to Miss Haley Dippel's point, on a, a long series of cases in a community with a scoff law who was violating the sanitary code and the zoning laws, and did not and would not respond to orders from, from the town. We then filed for preliminary injunction, got a preliminary injunction in Superior Court, would not respond to the preliminary injunction, was in contempt of court. So, then, we actually had a trial on the contempt issue. Won the contempt, got a decision that found that he was in contempt, he still wouldn't comply. He ended up getting hauled off to jail in irons and chains, and finally, you know, absolved himself of his contempt, came back to court, and, and then did it again, and we had a second contempt trial. And finally, you know, it all got resolved and cleaned up. But it took, it took several years, it took multiple hearings, it took trials and experience of understanding that zoning law and being able to have witnesses explain, you know, the issues and where the problems were to a Superior Court judge whose experience would all have been criminal law in the past, and got a very good result at the end of the day for the town. Let me just ask Cindy if she has anything to add? Or, David?
Yes.
Yes, sure, hi. Hi.
Um, addressing the question directly, Rachel and I got the privilege of studying five days before a land court judge, just a couple of months ago.
Fine.
But then, uh, I found, uh, in the right to, uh, a slight claim review, uh, a park project that was subjected to, uh, by a butter clearly had a, a personal matter, and, uh, it took, uh, five days to trial, the countless hours, uh, pre-trial matters, motions, uh, and, like, and I have to say, we were successful in all counts, uh, due primarily to Rachel's diligence and persistence, uh, on, uh, staying with this litigance, it was determined to have tried, at least, to outextend the town, uh, and outmuscle the town, uh, on issues that I think, uh, were, uh, really important, uh, to its land use department and to its board of select, uh, to be sure that we were taking a stand, uh, and holding our ground, uh, and, uh, we're not going to be bullied, uh, by, you know, a litigant that thought that they could have some outside authority, outsized authority, uh, in the states. Uh, so, uh, that's a real-time example of, uh, of, uh, some impressive work when needed. Um, but I, I do agree with, uh, the personal part, uh, with, uh, most towns, uh, that have been promising, there's a good solid counseling relationship, uh, that allows towns to sort of look down the street, around the corner, you know it's coming because they've got the experience to tell you, uh, where the outcome is, and, uh, in that way, uh, we can better advise our clients on, uh, ownership. Well, with Asian, ultimately, uh, boy, those guys, but, uh, the primary surgeon is called in, we're back.
Jack, do you have any follow-ups?
No, it's fine.
Okay, so we don't have an official closing statement, but really, this is just a last chance for you to mention anything that we haven't asked of you that you think is relevant to our choice here, anything that you really want to discuss, any other labor employment issues, whatever it is that you want to end by saying, or any thoughts on your mind after you've heard the scope of our questions?
The floor is yours.
I'm going to turn to the rest of the team.
Okay.
Um, Cindy, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't even talk. I'm, the one thing that jumps to my head is I hear a lot of questions about how the best of our patients and the officials, so we also, one thing that I have found unbelievable was helpful in terms of getting good information from my client, is even really, my client is awful, and they can remain for a couple hours, once a month, where I come down on a Sunday, everyone knows, and after a few times, there's always a line long, they get saved up from me, to one of my other cities where they want me Monday, everything, and, you know, I still recall, I was part of that, they were very, very, and religious about going, filing everything through one, two, three, six persons, getting one appointment for me, getting all of my, you know, the Monday, not necessarily Monday, but routine contracts that can be done and held will be in order, so I come in and it's like, oh, blah, 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 and we get to know me, and then we have people who are separate who are coming to talk to say, oh, and so we can get access to information before it's the exact year, or it's number, you know, before we have to care. So, for me, I find that to be one of the most rewarding and fruitful elements.
Now, I'll, I'll echo that too, Cindy, and just, you know, as I've said, communication is key, and I think it's going to be difficult in Houston sometimes, if there's a singular case that's taking up a lot of time at the moment, it's going to make sense to have a standing call every, every week or every other day. Uh, I've done that, um, it doesn't have to be permanent, but it's all about making sure that the message gets through, and I'll just, I'll say one more thing, I, I think I heard a question about, you know, how do we handle, um, dealing with whatever issue we're dealing with, especially in light of our, our other clients, and I think that's a great question and a very fair question.
Thank you.
Um, any, um, sorry.
Any, um, yeah, any law firm, frankly, who's good.
Yeah.
But, we're, we're really serious about, uh, the importance of communication, and, and we're, and we absolutely have the ability to respond, uh, and that's by cell phone, it's by email, it's, it's the, it's the profession we chose, and we do, frankly, we work a lot. We work in meetings, we work off-hours, um, we're, we are accessible, and we're proud of that, and we think it's an important aspect of, of what we do and how we serve our clients.
Carrie, I have one question.
Yeah.
It really is, um, out of our format, but you did mention that you do work for Situate. There are potentially some issues in which the interests of Situate and the interests of Cohasset, um, might be adverse. How would you handle that?
We'd have to analyze the issue, figure out the, what the conflict was.
And I think Cindy also.
Yeah, and, and then I think we'd have to have a conversation with the client and figure out, you know, we, we couldn't represent both clients in those situations, so that may be a case where there might have to be special counsel come in for one or the other of clients for the particular.
And how do you deal with the obvious, you have knowledge of internal workings of Situate and Cohasset, and then they're adverse?
Yeah, no, understand, and I, and all that I'm saying is that, that we, so, I don't work on Coh-, I don't work on Situate stuff, sh- of course, she works on Cohasset stuff, but it would be, we would be separated as much as we possibly could under the ethics law, and we would be walled off, so that, that information wouldn't ever be discussed or shared. Um, and, and if it, it, literally, if we have an ethical obligation to say, if we can't represent either community in that situation, I think we would have to, we would bring that forward and say, because of this potential conflict, we think both communities need special counsel here, and I don't think we have a problem doing that, because we practice ethically, and we want you to have the best representation that you can have. Cindy, anything to add?
Yeah, I, I don't think, uh, we, uh, we need, just, there are other clients, like my, my, and yes, I am, and so, I, my first approach is to go up here and say, find out the facts and the information, and get a sense of what the issues are, and be as close heartedly and simply aware from moment number one, and as soon as we can, there may be some situations where it would not be possible to represent both of them, I would immediately step back and carrots would step forward to continue the investigation and to, for sure, but that's a whole, it could just end whether or not the interest really truly has done, and that's really, and that's, oh, it's, it goes, so, I don't think the approach is something that is, and I don't think it's something that's been so wonderful, and...
And I would just add that we have great relationships with our fellow brothers and sisters in the municipal bar, so we have, you know, we would have suggestions if, if it became a situation where we couldn't do the representation, then we would have recommendations to, to help you find, represent the town in that.
Thank you.
All right, well, on that note, thank you all so much for coming. I know we're not always an easy town to get to, and thank you for sitting in traffic, and thank you for coming in person, it was really great to build personal relationships this way, so.
You all in person, easy for me.
Yes.
So, Carrie started the meeting off saying that this is Jean and Cory's, I mean Cory's, you know, in his second year.
His first in-person.
It's his first in-person meeting. So, uh, it's, in addition to seeing all of you, we're pretty happy to see each other.
It feels weird in a good way to be back, so.
Good, well, thank you, and if we can give you any further information, if you have any questions, and if you need to speak to us again, please, you know, Michelle knows how to find us.
Okay.
But, I'm great. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, thanks Cindy.
Another break.
Yep.
Cory's, Cory's going to the sandwich.
Yeah, go back to, yeah, go back to. Once KP is here, we're, we can get started, but...
We're running like a half hour early now.
I know.
Um...
That's fine. The before time.
The first one?
Yes.
Well, congratulations.
So, we, we know that it was hard for some people to get here, but we really appreciate you making it happen.
Yeah, no, uh, very, very happy to be here again, thank you for the opportunity.
Our pleasure, you know.
Yeah. Anyway, I guess our names are on the front.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we haven't done those.
Yeah, all right, yeah, we have our name tags out, thank you so much for coming. This is KP Law for our fans watching in the audience tonight, and just for starting off, we're asking to do a five-minute opening statement and, and introductions about who's here, and a little bit about you, and just a revoking statement, and then each member, member of the board has a question prepared that we will ask after that.
We can do that, I guess I'll start off.
Okay.
If I'm listed on the proposal as your primary contact during, on a going-forward basis, my name's Ryan Mazur, attorney at KP Law, I've been with the firm since July of 2005, so coming up on seventeen years now, uh, with the firm. My practice area is, is primarily labor and employment law, uh, ninety-nine percent of my practice is in the labor and employment field, uh, I'm one of, uh, eight, uh, attorneys in that practice area, and, uh, combined experience within that group is probably over a hundred-plus years of experience in labor and employment on public sector, uh, labor work. Um, in terms of, you know, my personal experience, um, you know, I, I primarily deal with, uh, contract negotiations, uh, labor relations, um, employment discrimination issues, um, and, uh, everything that kind of runs the gamut in the HR field. We kind of pride ourselves on our HR work, um, with, uh, that, in the, to provide to clients in that area, because we provide some, some work to some smaller towns in the western, uh, suburbs of Massachusetts, out towards the Berkshire area, and they have a, you know, a pretty high demand in terms of HR, uh, needs, and, uh, so we provide quite a bit of assistance in that area, like federal, um, statute compliance, FMLA issues and things such as that. Um, in terms of administrative agencies and work in those areas, a lot of work, uh, in arbitrations, um, in, uh, administrative agencies such as, excuse me, such as the Department of Labor Relations, the Civil Service Commission, uh, we do represent, uh, certain, uh, clients at the Department of Industrial Accidents, if you have workplace, um, injury issues, um, so, uh, really, when you think about the labor and employment and the work that, that we do, or the work that, that I do, it's, it's all-inclusive and, and thoroughly, you know, covered in all areas. Um, again, I'm one of eight, um, and, uh, you know, it's been a really, uh, great experience working for the firm, and, um, you know, really, the, the work that we provide, I think, is top-notch. Um, we consider ourselves and pride ourselves on, on being, you know, what we believe to be the best in, in, in this field in the state, um, and I think, uh, you know, the work that we, we provide in that, in that respect is really top of the line and top quality. Um, I know that Lauren's going to be here probably in just a minute, but, you know...
Hi. Hi, nice to meet everyone.
Hi.
Janelle Austin, I'm a shareholder at the firm as well, and Brian and I work together in, um, my practice, in addition to general law, so, I recognize, um, I also have a position across the state, state and some other courts on civil rights claims, Massachusetts Torque Cl- Claims Act claims, um, as well as enforcing areas involved, and that's from 2000 and about twenty-one, so, I also have particular expertise in, 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 and have been advising police chiefs since the enactment of the police reform legislation on specific implementation of that. Um, I also have a data privacy issue, as you all know, on what you, you know, there's been an increase in terms of hacking and cybersecurity issues in the past couple of years, um, I work on data privacy matters, HIPAA, in addition to the Data Privacy Act in Massachusetts, which is general laws, chapter ninety-three H. These areas overlap a lot, um, as you all know, social media, the increased use of technology in communities, you know, we see that both in the public records context, but also in the litigation context, and sometimes it's, um, in that as well. So, I do advise communities on those particular issues, but obviously, uh, represent communities both at town meeting, as well as, um, full service, as Brian correctly mentioned, um, we handle all the issues that we see our communities face, um, we have a close, you know, but obviously, we have a, a bench for any particular specific issue that you may face, um, while we see it all, and as you all know, issues are unique, um, and so we really try to apply that expertise to the community, that's the issue that the community faces, in a very community-wide way.
Okay, you've started to ask my first question, which is, what are your strengths that you think you bring to the table to work with our town, but also, can you talk a little bit more about your overall philosophy and approach to our form of government, which is, you know, an open town meeting forum with a select board, with a town manager, with the board and committee structure that we have? Share a little bit more about your, your overall approach and philosophy to that.
Well, I, I think I would, I would start off by saying, as lawyers, um, we, uh, we don't enact policy, okay? Um, that's something for boards and committees to, uh, decide and enact, so we don't, um, try to be a sixth member of the board. We provide advice and counsel, give you options for purposes of, of carrying out your policy initiatives, and we assist you in, in, in carrying those decisions out. Um, as a firm, I like to think that we're a firm of, of town councils, um, where, uh, while I have a, you know, an expertise in labor and employment matters, like Janelle said, there are other areas that, you know, my practice area touches upon, and we have to, you know, become well-versed in those areas, and we can draw from the experience of other attorneys, um, you know, uh, in those practice groups. Um, you know, but when it comes to those policy issues, those are things that I think, you know, we provide the guidance, you're, uh, the, the body that, uh, you know, accepts that guidance and carries it out, and, and then, to the extent that we can, you know, assist in, uh, in carrying that out, we do, um, and then, um, you know, if there's issues that arise after that, then, then we will, you know, defend the town, defend the policy, the initiatives that the, that the board, uh, ultimately decided to go down.
And I think I would, I agree with Brian, and I think I would add, we work, obviously, in a collaborative manner with the board, or any town official or employee that's authorized to contact, um, town council for legal services. Um, our goal is obviously to provide the town with the best legal services possible, that is what we do, um, that is what we do across the state, and we take great pride in that work, um, so obviously, it's really, whether it's pre-litigation, litigation in an advisory manner, to review a warrant, to answer a public records request, to deal with, we see the three-hundred-and-sixty version, because we've seen it a lot, um, so, it may be this particular question comes up, and we can alert the board, we can alert the town manager, we can alert another town official or employee, well, yes, this is the, the obvious, you know, inquiry and issue, however, there's all those X, Y, and Z to consider, um, and the goal is obviously to minimize any liability to the town, and to really be proactive in terms of how the town approaches its legal issues within the authorization that the town provides, as Brian says, we're responsive to what the town needs, um, and obviously, we do that in a very efficient, but also responsive manner for the community.
Great transition into our question about communication and education from Diane.
Okay. Gave away the, the key buzzword.
I know, I know.
Start preparing your response, so.
Go ahead, yeah.
Um, one of the strengths, obviously, of Massachusetts municipal government is the board, committee, and commission structure, and, um, yet managing and supporting each of those committees, commissions, and boards, as well as each of their members, um, is pretty challenging, especially for a small town, so, um, two-part question, describe your approach, again, to training, supporting, and updating our citizen volunteers on substantive legal issues, as well as their roles and responsibilities, and then also, um, if you could share some best practices, communication channels with individual members of committees and boards, as well as, um, uh, town staff, et cetera.
In terms of training, I think we have a very robust training, uh, program that we, uh, offer to all of our clients, um, I think, and I've seen it, um, it happens with, with new board members and the, and the clients in the towns that we represent, we'll have this very voluminous binder, three-ring binder of multiple tabs with, that's just replete with information on conflict of interest, uh, ethics issues, open meeting law, public records, um, there'll be various, like, DOR opinion letters in there, and, and Attorney General, um, opinions in there, um, so that's something that we provide, you know, to, to a, a board, or a new board member coming in. in. Annually, we are very interested in offering training. Training is part of being proactive, right? You stop the problem before it becomes a problem. You don't even, you don't even experience a problem with the appropriate training. So like, as an example, on the labor side, two of the attorneys in the labor group are MCAD-certified trainers. And they provide sexual harassment, hostile work environment, and other workplace discrimination trainings. Really, whether it's at the request of the client, or if we involve, or are involved in a particular matter, and we say, hey, you know, a training might not be a bad idea here, you know, department-wide training, town-wide training. And we'll also split the training up to provide or to provide some convenience for your elected and appointed officials who might be working during the day and have to come in at night. And then we'll have a separate training for your employees during the day, so that they're not here after hours and you have to deal with any of that. I think we pride ourselves in the training that we offer and the training that we provide to our clients.
Yes, I regularly conduct training on open meeting law, public records, data privacy issues. I've done trainings for fire departments on HIPAA compliance. Obviously, police reform is going to be a huge evolving area in the next couple of years, and that crosses both the labor and employment context in terms of how that's implemented. It also has public records implications, because there was a provision in the law that changed a specific section of the public records law. In addition, it has records retention requirements. So we anticipate a lot of trainings on that in the upcoming years. But like I said, HIPAA training, we really pride ourselves in providing best practices, but in a proactive manner. So one example to that is, obviously, during the pandemic, we regularly advised our clients, Brian, what would you say? Like every week, if not every couple of days, in terms of what the guidance the state was putting out. Both on town meeting matters, public records matters, elections matters, and we did that at no charge to our communities. You can go on the website, you're there. And that was really a benefit, because we were all in it together to say, this is how the law is right now, these are the states, these are the special acts that are being passed on licensing issues, and really getting that information out to town leaders as quickly as possible was really the goal. We're still doing that, and also if there's a particular case that comes out that really impacts the community, whether in the land use context or another particular area, we would provide an update to that. That would usually slide through or you have a manager, or you have a particular internal building inspector, or a planner, or the Conservation Commission, and so it could be forwarded from there. But they're all available at no charge, any, into the town leaders, to really keep you updated on all the legal issues that you hear about, which is really a benefit, because it may answer. If that's helpful, Diane.
Very helpful, thank you.
Lauren Goldberg.
Hi, Lauren.
I like to come in with like a big.
Yeah.
Make an entree. Welcome, we're happy you're here.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate being here. So I drove behind very careful drivers, and then there were two trains.
Yup.
And I was over at the library.
Did lower a speed limit, too.
Yeah, we.
Glad to hear that.
A lot of obstacles to getting here.
Really awful.
Challenge.
Anyway, my apologies.
We're happy you're here, Diane. All right, I think Cory has our next question.
Sure, yeah, I've, this is really just in terms of litigation. You know, one question that we deal with often is making the decision of when to pursue litigation or when to pursue, you know, alternative forms of resolution, including perhaps not even pursuing litigation. You know, we don't think that litigating every case is really cost-effective, it's not necessarily good for residents either. So the question is, what strategies do you employ to help guide towns to decide what's an appropriate use of litigation, balancing competing interests of, you know, enforcing bylaws, but also costs, especially when there are disagreements about like the scope or application of certain areas of our bylaws or.
I can address that. So I handle, I'll give a couple of examples. Obviously, zoning enforcement is a big piece of what communities deal with, I'm sure you deal with it here as well. Board of Health enforcement is another, is another decision. Usually, we try to get involved early, LKA, before you, before you institute litigation, really want to understand the risks and benefits of doing it. Involuntary compliance is always better, because quicker and it costs less money. And that's always to try to have that happen, but unfortunately, as we all know, that isn't always the case for zoning enforcement matters. You know, ultimately, as Brian mentioned, it's a policy decision as to whether litigation is going to be pursued. However, we outline the risks and benefits and use our experience that we've used in other, that we've seen in other communities, whether it be in housing court, or land court, or superior court, where the cases would be brought, to really advise, okay, we think based on how complex this issue is, how long that litigation would take. Or we had this happen in another community, it took six months, or it was resolved fairly early, or it went to mediation, or whatever the case is. So we'd really analyze that and use our expertise to say, well, there's no, when no one has a crystal ball, this is probably the sense of how. The cost and certainly the timeframe. Obviously, if there's an emergency, we've dealt with emergencies before, a house needs to be demolished, or there's a really, really. Rest fairly quickly, that's a different category where you have, right, because of a public health risk. But in other, in other circumstances, it would really be up to the, how you pursue it, and we would be ready to go whenever we got that authorization.
And if I could just add, I didn't know if we, if we talked about how things were going to go, but I have something else. I think it's important to understand that we never want to see towns get to litigation. You know, I think in the Labor and Employment Department, they are, it's one of their, you know, their philosophies, which is, we don't want to be reactive, we want to be, you know, prepared. And so trying to do things right the first time, we encourage you to have your chairs aboard if this is, you know, kind of what you're dealing with. If there's a really difficult zoning appeal, we'd rather that you call and say, hey, there's a really difficult zoning appeal. Especially with Zoom, we can listen in, we can just, but even without it, it may be worth it to have counsel there. So our goal is to keep you out of litigation. As you know, though, sometimes you get sued, and that's different. Whether to pursue litigation, that's a policy issue. When you're sued, how to deal with that is, it's a policy issue, but it also is unavoidable. We always encourage you to send any complaints to the insurer right away. Better if they can assign counsel and pay for it. You know, sometimes we, actually, Janelle has handled a number of litigations where, litigation efforts where the case was referred to counsel, to insurance counsel, but they still needed Janelle, because they couldn't figure it out, they couldn't figure out what the issues were. So, you know, again, I think our entire approach is do it right the first time, know what right is, and then, you know, try not to wind up in a situation where you do get sued. And with respect to whether to go to litigation, again, you know, we want the record to be as absolutely complete as it can be, we want that public hearing to have no procedural flaws, and we don't want to see any of the public records, conflict of interest issues that generally accompany a land use complaint. So we, we're always kind of work at all of those angles at the same time.
Okay, you mentioned, oh, no, go ahead.
I apologize, I just wanted to add, kind of on the, on the labor and employment side of things, and Lauren touched on it a little bit. I think one of the largest areas that we see where there becomes some type of adversarial process is in contract interpretation cases. You have seven contracts on the town side, you have seven town-side unions, all the contracts are, I think they expired this past June, so you're probably in process right now or starting negotiations with all of those groups. And in my experience, the largest area that I see in terms of labor-related litigation is contract interpretation cases, because the players change, you know, chiefs change, department heads change, employees come and go, people have different ways or different, you know, thoughts of what the language actually means in an agreement. So, you know, when we are involved in the collective bargaining negotiations at the table, we generally, you know, try to identify those areas where we could see potential pitfalls and, you know, work towards getting contract language changes in those specific articles, to avoid that prospectively on a going-forward basis, so that won't become a problem in the future.
Okay, yeah, thank you for clarifying. You brought up land use, and our next couple of questions focus on land use and environmental stuff, and I know you may not have your person here that deals with that, but we'll try to ask them, and if we need to do a follow-up, we can. Yeah.
So this may be a follow-up, but, so hi, I'm Jeanne Healy-Diffle, nice to meet you all. How you're doing. Cohasset is a small town, as you've probably seen, but we have large land use and environmental needs, including with respect to potential comprehensive bylaw reform that we're considering. So we want to ensure that the specific lawyers that you propose to represent us are going to ensure that we, including our boards and commissions, as well as those working on the bylaw reform, receive the substantive, timely, and responsive advice or representation in that context. So my question really is to the attorney who will be handling those land use and environmental issues, I'd like to have them describe their experience, as well as their practical approach, their day-to-day approach, in helping Cohasset meet those goals, particularly in light of other clients that, you know, you may be juggling. When, again, dealing with bylaw reforms, number one, land use permitting decisions and that process, and then litigation, whether it's defensive or offensive.
I think, I don't want to ever say I'm speaking for Carolyn, she's watching, I appreciate that. But I think I can talk to you about our approach, because that really is kind of part and parcel of who we see ourselves as. So Carolyn Murray, who lives nearby, is proposed as your primary contact for land use purposes. And Carolyn is a woman of many talents. She was actually with our firm for quite a while, and then the Braintree passed a new charter, and she was hired by the mayor to come and help them implement their new charter. So she left us for a bit, and then she came back. You know, I, it was much easier to convince her to come back. And so she has dealt with everything across the board, you know, labor and employment, land use, licensing, you know, open meeting, public records, conflict of interest. And she, for that reason, she's very well-rounded. Her kind of area of focus, what she has spent a lot of her time doing in both towns where she is a lead attorney, like as Brian is supposed to be, and where she's a lead for land use, is, you know, she, she is, I was going to say, so she, she makes sure, just like, you know, you all have to juggle schedules, well, we have to do that, too. And, you know, no matter what size law firm you are, you're always going to have that. One needy client can be, you know, a hundred percent different than ten non-needy clients. So we, we have found that the kind of expertise across the board allows us to have this focus, for each of us to have this focus. For example, Brian, labor and employment, I do elections and town meeting and charters. And that's because I like that, and Janelle does, you know, she works with police chiefs and does licensing hearings. We each have gravitated to something we're good at and something that we're comfortable with. Carolyn has litigated any number of cases. In fact, I can't remember exactly how long it lasted, but I think there was a three-year goat tribe. So she's, she really has the experience to be of assistance, and our thought process for land use, just like everything else, is we want to know what your goals are, we want to know how you want to get there, we want to know whether you're looking for change. And I always like to say, there's a difference between changing your bylaws to mimic reality, right, what actually happens, or changing reality to be like the bylaws. And so that's something that we all take, you know, very fiercely. We look at it and we say, is it accomplishing what it was intended to do? Is it a hindrance? Is there a different way to do it? And as much involvement as you want is the amount of involvement we can provide. Again, Carolyn does a lot of four-to-beats, and Carolyn will go to the very first hearing, she might do a training first on four-to-beats for the VBA, and then she'll go to every single hearing the entire time, and she might even help draft the decision, or she might draft the decision herself. In other towns, they don't want that, they're not looking for that kind of support at a VBA meeting, and so they might call her, you know, something tricky happened, or at the very end to say, hey, you know, take a look at our draft decision, do you think it's, do you think it's supported the right way? And, and we want to provide you with whatever level of service you want. One of the things that we always talk about is how, we're the only department that doesn't, you know, choose our budget, right? We don't meet with the town manager and talk about, well, this year we expect it'll be da-da-da, and we would like a three percent increase, because your budget is what you got, and how you spend it is up to you. So if you decided, for example, that land use, you'd rather have someone at, you know, a majority of the meetings, then we'll make that happen. If what you decide is you'd rather that we come, you know, to the first one and the last one, then that's what we do. And every time, it's the board's choice. And by that, I mean this board. How legal expenses are used is, or incurred, is, you know, a decision that goes through the town manager and the board. And so, you know, there may be a board that insists on having representation at every single meeting, and you guys look at the budget and say, I'm sorry, we just can't afford that right now, you know, we'll have her come in, we'll have her look at it. And that's fine, you know, that's, that's realistic and appropriate. So again, we try to make your money last as long as it can. We, back to Carolyn, when we, when we write up our bills, we write up actually what we did, and the amount of time and the attorney's initials. So except for litigation strategy, you should be able, we try not to put it in there, but you should be able to pick up our bills and give them to the public, because they are written for that purpose. You all have made policy choices, the bills reflect those policy choices. And we want you to know what you're getting for your money, and we also want to make sure, because we understand the public records law. And we know that the attorney-client privilege can be asserted for bills, but the question of whether to assert that, that is a whole different lengthy road that perhaps we're not going down. But I think it demonstrates all of this, that's the, you know, the difference focuses we have, have really kind of for all of us, we're all municipal attorneys. And so our antenna are up, you know, we know when we're looking at something, oh, this is an issue, that's an issue. And sometimes there's a need for someone more specific also in land use, so we have one of our attorneys who does a lot, a lot of conservation work, actually, too. So if there's Conservation Commission issues and they're complicated, Carolyn might say, I'd like you to work with so-and-so, introduce you, have a discussion, and, you know, have that kind of jump off from there. But no matter what, you would always know, if it's a land use issue, you could call Brian, and Brian could talk to Carolyn and figure out how to get it covered, or if the board, you know, agrees to this approach, they could just call Carolyn directly. But that's, that's that policy part. So.
Yeah.
We're available, we juggle things, like my driving habits. But, you know, our goal is that you really don't ever have to hear about that, I know I didn't start off well. You know, that we don't say, like, we're busy tonight because we're in town X.
Right.
Most of the time, we're going to try to make sure that we're able to do what it is that you need. And even if there is a conflict, and I think this is really important as well, we have a bench, if we're going to have a sports analogy, that is talented and knowledgeable behind us. So, you know, I would prefer to rely on Carolyn to deal with a zoning issue, even though I have read the zoning law, I go to town meeting and deal with zoning issues, but Carolyn's better at that. If Carolyn says, oh, you know, I really think we need this conservation focus, then we are essentially being the most efficient, using the person that has the most familiarity with it, and going from there. So we are always trying to minimize your legal costs, and we are, as I said, we try to be accommodating to whatever schedule or amount of face time it is that you guys require.
Okay. I do just want to ask a quick follow-up question, just to be consistent with the others. And I appreciate the desire to minimize legal costs, but I do want to ask about any specific recent experience, and maybe this is a question better directed towards Carolyn later on, but sometimes in litigation. but sometimes in litigation, there's goals beyond money, including deterrence. And so I'm curious as to whether your firm has recently hired, handled specifically the person or people who would be representing us in the land use litigation context, where, again, the goals go beyond money.
Absolutely. I don't think there's any question that we're looking at the full picture. What we're trying to understand is, what is your level of risk that you want to take? What is the level of certainty that you want? What's been done in the past? How many other situations are like that? And again, you know, we prefer not to litigate. We are great at litigation, Janelle and Brian can both attest to, but if we don't have to do that, then again, you know, that's a better outcome. Sometimes towns will go to court, even though we tell them, there's no way you can win. And again, it's because it's not about money, it's about the purpose, the underlying purpose. It's about making sure that people follow zoning bylaws, and they don't keep, you know, 12 cars in their front yard, and that they, you know, are ensuring that their houses are boarded up when they're not there, so that animals can't get in. There are reasons to litigate something that go beyond money. In the process, though, we're not going to, you know, it's unethical, we would never anyway, but we're very aware of what it is and how much we're spending. We actually create a new matter for every particular issue that you're dealing with. And so, you know, if, if I get a bill at the end of the month, and, you know, there's 30 hours there, I think, oh my gosh, you're like, what is this? But I actually know ahead of time, because the, this is a land use attorney within, at the HAC for 13 days, it was the longest of long times. And so, you know, that's why that was so high there. And the town that this was, they decided, we don't care, because we believe we might lose at the HAC level, but we're going to do it anyway, because it's the principle. So again, I think we're very aware of those types of issues and very respectful of them. And once you all have made a decision about how you want to pursue something, it's our job to defend it, and it's our job to be a zealous advocate for you. So we aren't the decision-makers. We try to point out all the issues that we can, and if, if, you know, we think, oh, this is going to be really expensive, and you say, doesn't matter, we're going to do this, you know, that's a decision that you all make. We're still conscious of the money you're spending, and we're still careful about how we use our time. But we do see most issues from that kind of 360-degree viewpoint. And it's hard for us to, you know, take off our hat that we use every day and then put it down. We see things, and we have ideas, and, you know, maybe they're not the same things that you want. It's not our place to push that. And really, the only time, Brian is more in a situation where sometimes he has to push an outcome, because there's an illegality or a non-constitutional issue, most of the time, we're going to say, here's what we think, no crystal ball, like Janelle said, but, you know, this is, if you think this is worth litigating, you know, we, we can do that. There's a good argument, and we can do it. So again, that is also kind of why different boards have different priorities, and so you see money spent in different ways. So, you know, this board might say, it's the principle, we don't care, I'm not saying that. But the next board might say, hey, we're only going to do what we have to do, if we get sued, we'll defend, and that's it. And those legal bills are going to look different because of it. It's not because we chose to send you in a direction, we want you to know all of the, all of the issues, so you can make a good choice about how you want to proceed. And then, as I said, we'll, we'll support what you want, you know, as long as we believe that there's an argument that can be made, and that the law can be interpreted like that, then we're, you know, we're zealous advocates.
More excited?
Yes, please.
To put my, my litigator hat on for, for all of you. I think the basement is really communication, and our goal is always to communicate with the board, the town officials, in terms of where things are at at any given time. Things change. I will not leave, if I leave a court hearing before I'm even driving, an email goes or a phone call goes to whomever the contact person is, to ensure they're up to date, because you don't want to get a call from the newspaper, you don't want to get a call from a resident saying, this happened. Communication is really key. So along the way, whatever litigation, I mean, a defendant, you depend on the litigation, you just decide in terms of, you know, with consultation with counsel, what the litigation strategy is, that's one path. The second path is in terms of, as I was saying, you know, in a plaintiff's position, you outline the risks and benefits. And obviously, communication is key, you get a decision from a court, that, and really, there may be an executive session, you meet an executive session, we analyze litigation strategy. But that communication is really important, when you're analyzing, whether it be in the land use context, or on the plaintiff's side enforcement, you really want to analyze where things are at at any given point, and where, how the town wants to proceed, while using its budget, as Warren had mentioned. So I know that's always, that's part of the principle. We will, we will, along the way, we get calls from the council, obviously, on a settlement proposal, that way, to find out, this is what it is, analyze it in the next meeting. But communication is really, really key, communication. And building that rapport, so that you can understand what the benefits are, as you outline the judicial process. Especially now, where there is a little bit of a backup in court, obviously because of COVID, courts are doing the best that they can to keep things moving, but the case that might take three months now might take a year. So that's another factor. And I do think that'll probably go on for the next couple of years, at least in my practice, that's what I'm seeing. So that's another factor, if you have a situation that might be more of an emergency, maybe a mediation is more appropriate, or alternative resolution, versus going the judicial process. And, and the communication is really key in terms of analyzing that.
Hi. Jack?
Yeah, thank you for, for coming. As I've said to the other firms, we are a very small town, and we think we're very special, and we want to keep it that way. And I think this select board has gotten clear messages from our, our citizens, that this, they, they want us to do what it need, what needs to be done. So obviously, it's nice to talk about theory and what you, how you want to do all of this, but it's helpful if you have some very specific cases that you've worked on, very specific things, and what you thought was successful and, and unique, and showed your expertise. And were you successful? And if not, I mean, what happened? Or were you successful, or was it remanded? Did you know it was going to be remanded? So I'd be appreciative of some specific wins, if you will.
Sure. We can all, we can all tell you our war stories. You want a chance?
And land use, of course.
Yeah.
Without giving away any confidential or privileged information.
That's all right. You can do it, it's fine with us.
This forever on the interweb, though.
With my practice, so I handle a lot of tort claims, negligence claims under Chapter 258. In addition, I handle a lot, under the year, of firearms license appeals involving the police department. Those are obviously, especially in this day and age, very high-profile. Police chiefs take their licensing authority incredibly, incredibly, is a, is a privilege, but also a responsibility, in terms of who has a gun license. And so those cases, I have litigated up to the appeals court. I have several cases that felt were very strong, and when we went into court, the judge disagreed with the police chief's decision. And in consultation with the town officials and the police chief, we ultimately decided to appeal that further and prevailed. That being said, there were other cases where the court disagreed with the police chief. In that case, that, that's fine. Obviously, I don't substitute my judgment for that of a police chief or any other town But I think that those types of cases are indicative, in terms of how we work with community leaders, and navigate what's important in your community, what particular issue is important on a fact, on a fact-specific basis, and say, in this case, we're going to go up on appeal, and we live the law, and the community was happy, on this case, we're not going to pursue it. So I hope that answers your question. It's a little hard as a litigator, because you don't want to get into, you know, your prior privileged work product, but I think, I think that's really where I would say, you know, the bulk of my, where it's higher stakes, shall I say. I've had other civil rights cases that I've defended in federal district court, I've had eminent domain trials that we've pursued on behalf of community jury trials on those. Our litigation, we have a litigation practice group that pretty much litigates any particular issue that a community would, would face.
With land use?
Yes.
When you mentioned eminent domain, I mean.
Yes. So eminent domain cases, but obviously 4817 appeals, we pursue those. Sometimes there's a situation where, in a land use appeal issue, we appeal, and perhaps the community takes more of a passive stance in that case, and allows the butter to take the more active stance, while we would monitor that on behalf of the community. And that's a policy decision that we would work closely with the community to say, where do you fall on this case? Do you want us to actively defend, or do you want us to take the lead? And the butter would take the active lead while saving the town. The cost in other cases, the town feels very strongly, they say, no, I want to join the butter in the appeal, and then dispute accordingly.
Janelle, if I can just jump in just quickly. So in the land use context, as Janelle said, we see different types of cases. We see a lot of enforcement cases, and for those, we essentially start, we, we look at the work that the zoning enforcement officer has already done, or the building inspector has already done. We look at any of the existing history, because oftentimes, there is a lot of history for zoning issues. And we work with them to make sure that everything that they did was 100% defensible. Then, we, if, if the person doesn't comply, then we send out what we call a town council letter, which basically says, you know, you need to fix this by X date, you need to do X, Y, and Z things, and if you don't, then we're authorized to, you know, to go as far as filing in superior court. And sometimes that works. I'm thinking of a particular issue where there was a impediment on the sidewalk outside of a store in one of our towns, like a big statue, and it was beloved, it was a beloved statue, but it was a huge issue when outdoor dining, which is a big thing. And so, you know, trying to get this person to understand why it was a big deal, and that he wasn't being persecuted, he wasn't being treated differently, those are all the kinds of things that, that we deal with. We deal with a lot of proceeds on zoning, so we have, you know, very upset people who come to the table. We deal with, it, the Case Estates in Weston, I don't know if you guys know that property, but it used to be owned by Harvard, and it's gorgeous, and there's part of it that's subject to preservation restrictions, and part to affordable, I mean, to historic preservation restrictions. But, you know, talk about going on for years. I think they voted to acquire the property in 2006, and they are still working on it today. You know, there's, is there arsenic in the, in the soil? Whose job is it to clean it up? How should it be cleaned up? Who negotiates? Is it us? Is it the town? You know, is it a former town employee who they have great respect for? You know, so, so there's all that. Then there's the way that the plans were drawn then, and the way they're drawn now, and, you know, you can, it's, it's on, like, every single, every single court meeting. And, and I think it just goes to show you that, you know, we understand their implications far beyond that one vote at town meeting, or far beyond, you know, that one success.
Is this when I should confess that when I was 12, I started a brush fire there with a firecracker?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
So, so we do, we, we do see things go on and on, whether to litigate.
I did.
You know, in, in that case, whether to litigate, you know, Harvard's on one side or on the other, what do we want to do? So that's, you know, that's that kind of thing. And then 40B, literally every single 40B that we deal with, we wind up in court for that, and, not in court, at the HAC, and then maybe in court. We try to explain, and this is always really hard to understand, in the moment, when some giant 40B is going to go up, that the law is so much not on your side, that there are difficulties down the road because of the way that HAC operates, because of what we need to prove, because of the, really because of the statute and the way 40B is written. But some of our clients want to litigate that, and so they go through the, the path of litigating. Other clients, and I would say a significant number of them, we encourage them to negotiate. It's 12 houses, you know, 12 houses is not a lot of houses. Let's get the setbacks more significant, let's require more distance between the, the side yard setbacks, let's cap the height of the building. So, and, and we are telling you, hey, going forward, there's a huge likelihood that this 12, you know, unit project is going to be approved by half. So they're going to say, it's good. And so we have to decide, do we want to get the best 12-unit, you know, development? Or do we want to, you know, wind up with something else down the road? And, you know, speaking of experiences, that you see quite frequently. Perhaps a friendly 40B at the start, turns unfriendly, goes from, you know, 20 units to 200 units, and it, and it takes a turn. So we really are, we know that there is utility in talking about it at the ground level, and that there's more issues than legal issues. At the same time, we feel very confident about our litigation skills. And as Janelle said, we have a few, a few litigators that do only that, that's really what they do. But every single one of us, and I have to include me in that, because I've been litigating election stuff, every single one of us is in court, is before a state agency, we're defending open meeting law, conflict of interest, public record stuff, and we're doing that with different agencies, some, you know, we're doing it just with a letter, some, we're doing it in person, some, there's interviews. So again, you know, we, we do what we can. I'll tell one more war story, and then Brian can jump. But I worked with a board that, an open meeting law complaint had been filed against the board, the regular town council had a conflict. And so I wound up being hired to help with that. And the board, despite, you know, me saying, this is the way the open meeting law works, and you guys can make this go away if you want, blah, 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 they, they took the position, they did nothing wrong, and they refused to do anything to, you know, to repair the issue. And that was, you know, that was their position. I, you know, I sent a letter to the AG that says exactly what their position was. But other towns, they might say, Lauren, what should we do here? Do you think that? And so I, I would always say back, we're not going to make a decision for you, but I'll tell you, I think it would be easy enough to, example, put this on the next meeting warrant, talk about it there, and attach the minutes of that first meeting. And most of the time, the client's just like, thank you, you know, that makes a lot of sense. We have appealed some public records decisions, and some open meeting law decisions. The laws are tilted towards, towards the states, and we, we've been successful in a few of them, which we're very proud of, if you don't have that list, we will make sure to get it to you. And, and, you know, the towns that wanted to pursue those, it's exactly the same, where we said, hey, we think it's more than likely that you will lose, and they said, that doesn't matter, we want to go. So, you know, bottom line is, we are always kind of dealing with things at different levels. Half of the stuff goes up, half of the stuff goes nowhere, and, you know, some of it sits. When it goes to court, it just sits there for years. And, you know, the plaintiff decides they're not going to do anything else. Sorry, I mean, the defendant says, oh, we're just going to leave it, we're not going to fight, but the case just lingers. So anyway, that's, that's.
In terms of war stories, I think as a labor lawyer, you know, what I recall mostly are termination cases, because there's such a, such a high, the stakes are so high in those cases, especially when you're dealing with, you know, a small town, and especially when you're dealing with a circumstance where maybe, you know, the employee who's the subject of the case lives in town. who's the subject of the case lives in town. You may have known them for years. You may have kids of the same age where you see them at school events or on ball fields. And those cases are high stakes. A lot goes into them. And what we try to do, I think, is get in on the ground floor so that we can prepare the town and prepare the town's best case at the earliest possible time. Not, you know, I don't think really one case really sticks out. You know, the police officer cases that I've had, those termination cases, where there's an involved investigation, where there's days of hearing, where, you know, it's a small department and, you know, battle lines can be drawn, so to speak. You know, those are the, those are the cases that I really recall. And as a, as a practicing attorney in that, obviously witness preparation is incredibly important. Getting on the same page as the appointing authority is incredibly important. Also with the department head, whatever, you know, whatever department head you meet. There are quite a few that I recall. I was dealing with one case out on the Cape of the Islands. It was a very small department, very small community. It involved a superior officer who had been with the department for over two decades, you know, no history of discipline. And a really bad incident happened that he was the supervising officer on. And, you know, the town made the ultimate decision to separate that officer from his job. Again, he lived in town. He'd been on the, he'd been there for, you know, 25 years or some period of time such as that. The stakes are high because of the potential back, back wages that are also to be paid. Arbitrations are unpredictable because you're dealing with a third party. It's like a jury trial. Juries are unpredictable. So at the end of the day, you know, arbitrations are unpredictable and, you know, they're nerve wracking in that respect. But in that case, we were able to, you know, secure a favorable decision for the town. So the policy decision was upheld, which we were obviously, you know, incredibly pleased about and there wasn't any type of an appeal in that case.
Yeah, and Brian, I was just thinking that in a lot of those cases, and I know this isn't land use, but in a lot of those termination cases, you know, we're also thinking, we, we know these people. We worked with them typically, you know? We're thinking, just like the town is thinking, gee, do we want to have to do a huge thing about this? Would it be better if the individual just resigned? What's the likelihood of, you know, if we go to court or we go to arbitration, what's going to happen there? And that's also part of the decision making. And so, you know, in cases where everybody's able to kind of go back to their corners and no litigation occurs, we see that as a win. Because kind of the town isn't dealing with that for months and months and months and months, which is what we typically see with difficult terminations, so.
Okay, thank you. That's all the individual questions that we have. Are there any final thoughts or final words for us as we're making our decision? Any, anything that we didn't bring up that you wanted to mention? Any final thing?
The torch to the left. Certainly thank you to the board for having us here. I think we started in the beginning and will come full circle. That our experience across the state is unmatched. You know, not to be, think in hindsight, but we talked a little bit about the advisory that we were issuing to communities back in March 2020. And part of that really highlighted the multitude and the three sixty five, as the board office correctly points out, of our practice, which really. So whether it be on a firearms issue or a HIPAA issue or a public record, conflict of interest, finance issue, we really do bring all of that to the table. This is, is your small team here, but you have behind us experts in any area that you could possibly think of that your community might face. And that really is what sets us apart. We are here for you, the lines of community. By the best legal services that we can. So I think goes without saying, certainly thank you, but we're here for any questions, but really appreciate your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm going to give Lauren the floor in just one second. I just want to say, I think one of the things that, you know, really is a strength of the firm and something that I really pride myself on is our responsiveness. We pride ourselves on being responsive to clients. You know, in this day and age, really, you know, there are emergencies all the time. We're always there, on weekends, on vacation. You know, no issue is too small. And that's how we, you know, look at everything. We're a customer service. Pride ourselves on being responsive. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thank you. So I think just what I'd like to point out and something that we all feel really strongly about is that each one of us has a stake in the firm. Each one of us cares. We essentially, you know, acquire new clients because of our reputation. We are always trying to do the absolute best that we can and have the best outcome. As, as we've talked about, our firm does look at that 365 view. We provide as much information to both clients and non-clients about new and difficult decisions and laws and, you know, the kind of practical side of things. And we've talked a lot about kind of the law part, but we also bring very practical advice. We see something like that. It's often, and no community, you can't pull something off a shelf and say, here it is. Because every community is completely different. And I think that's why it makes us excited to sit down with a potential new community because we learn their goals, we learn their, you know, their issues, what they'd like to do, what they like not to do, you know, who knows what and how much information needs to be provided. And we learn your documents, we learn your charter, we learn your bylaws, your, and your town meeting, you know? Every town is different. But we do have the luxury of having approached issues like this before, you know, whatever it might be. Or we think, oh, it worked really well when we thought about it like that. You know, if I run into Brian or Janelle in the hall ever again, in the office, but I'll call them and say, hey, can you help me think this through? I mean, essentially you are getting, we're not reinventing the wheel. We're using the tools that we already have to provide you with the best service. It is, each town has a tailored and different experience. There is no town that I can think of where it's the same team with the same attitude and the same issues. It's not. Every town is unique. So we would love the opportunity, I know we've done some special towns of work, but we'd love the opportunity to serve as your town council. And we are of course willing to provide any information that you might need. Carolyn is likely not to be available this week. I can certainly have a different land use attorney talk to you if you want, but they're going to say very much what.
Okay.
Because we really do have a philosophy as a firm about serving municipalities and what our role is as compared to the select board or the zoning board or the planning board. So you'll hear a very similar response from, maybe more than goats.
We appreciate that. Thank you so much for coming. I know this was harder than doom, but it was really nice to feel your energy in real time and, you know, have this personalized aspect, I think really helped us to make the decision, so. Thank you, thank you for, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Bye now.
Great to meet you. Bye, Lauren. Bye bye, Brian.
Have a good night. Um, I need one more break. Quick break and then. Corey's not. Nice to meet you. All right, welcome. And thank you again for coming in person. I noticed you. And we're getting used to being back in person again, but we really wanted to meet face to face and get a feel for each other in real time. So we really appreciate coming.
Of course, it's our pleasure.
Yeah, so we obviously are assessing our town representation, trying to figure out the best fit for us. And we have a few questions we're going to ask, but we did just want to say, if you would start with a brief five minute opening statement and introduction of who you both are and, you know, just tell us who you are.
So I'm Jamie Kenny. This is Rich McKenna, one of the associates in the office, that has worked a lot with Christine, you're in your team here, your wonderful team here at the asset, who we've worked with for around four years now. So we're probably the youngest firm that you're going to talk to tonight, meaning that we founded the firm eight years ago. And it was myself and John Clifford. John was a town manager and I was a labor lawyer. So I was one of the youngest chief negotiators in history of the day. I became a chief negotiator in my twenties. I negotiated for large public sector labor unions in mostly cities. But I've done municipal labor relations for two years exclusively. I've also worked with, when I was on the union side of the table, doing state labor relations and I've also had experience doing federal labor relations in my career. So I've kind of done it at every level of government and I have been doing it, like I said, for quite some time. When I was on the union side of the table, I handled 500 grievance arbitrations, right? So I'd be all over the state. So sometimes I actually would be all over New England. Sometimes I would be in Maine, I would be in New Hampshire, I would be in Massachusetts. And really what I saw was that, you know, what the contract said really wasn't what brought us to the table in terms of litigation. It was really more a lot of the time about work culture and really about how. And so when we switched, when I switched sides and I founded the firm with John, I really wanted to put an emphasis on giving the municipal department heads these tools to be able to manage effectively in a unionized. People get very fear filled when there's unions. They're afraid to supervise, they're afraid to manage. So what we've tried to really do, and Rich will speak about it as well, is we've really tried to put an emphasis on relationships and also an emphasis on practical solutions for a municipality in dealing with unionized employees and non-union employees, but mostly everybody's unionized here. And really utilize the collective bargaining agreement as a tool to manage effectively. And, you know, John's biggest complaint when he was a town manager was that he would call labor council and he would get answers like, well, you could do this or you could do that. We don't do that at Clifford and Kenny. We really try to talk through problems and come up with a solution that's a holistic solution. And then we provide that follow-up. Here's an outline for the meeting with the employee. Here's the letter that we need to send. Here's the next step. So we really try to outline and step through each problem and then support your leaders in making those determinations and having those conversations on the ground. So that's really how we approach things and we do that so that we can avoid litigation. As you know, litigation is the budget buster, right? So all of you, we'd rather you spend your money on your resources and your employees versus litigation. And we have had no litigation since the labor council here. We've had no say MCAD filings, we've had, you know, no arbitrations, we've had a really effective way to deal with these issues without having to break the bank in terms of having litigation come out of our, you know, our piece of, our piece of the puzzle when it comes to the labor, the legal budget. And that's the reason that. I'll have Rich talk a little bit about his background, but Rich has been with us for four years. And, you know, we really try to recruit the best and retain the best and all of you speak away.
Well, you know, as, as good as I am, it all comes from learning from Jamie and John. So I joined the firm about a year out of law school. I was working for a small insurance defense firm in Wellesley and this opportunity came up and I knew I had to take it. Because this is what I wanted to do and I knew that Jamie and John from reading about them online and knowing some people who knew them, that this was going to be exactly what I was looking for. And I'm really happy that this is where I wound up because of the way that I learned how to practice in this field and learn how to negotiate and, you know, have a real emphasis on credibility at the bargaining table so that the union knows when we say we're going to do something, we do it. And they know that when we say we're going to settle something or give them an opportunity for something, we need. And those are really just some of the great things that I've been able to learn in my time there. We were just talking about it outside. I feel like, you know, compared to, you know, after year one, now just about four years, I can answer a lot more questions. But I know that when I don't have the answer, I can always go back to Jamie or John to get it. And, you know, that's really the best, best of both worlds because I'm able to now counsel, but also not just the person who's answering the phone to say, I'll, I'll be checking with Jamie and John and everything. I do have some of the answers now.
I think the important thing that Rich says is that with our business, our credibility is so huge, right? Because, you know, it's not, we can't take a scorched earth approach to labor relations because you're dealing with the same stakeholders over and over again. And as you know, the town employees, it's not like Google. We don't have people that are here for one or two years. We have people that have longevity within this organization and we really want to make sure that we're mentoring our staff and making sure we're, you know, putting back to our staff to make sure that we have long-term relationships and we can sustain those long-term relationships, both within, you know, within the office space, but then also at the bargaining table. So that credibility is huge. We can't do scorched earth with labor relations because you're right back at it in two and a half years when that contract comes back up. So I think that's one of the things that we really press upon our associates and also our clients is that its credibility is huge for us.
You've started answering a few of our questions, actually, which is great. But really my first question was, what do you think your strengths are specifically with working with a town like us? And then what is really your overall approach to a small town like us with the type of government structure we have, right? With the select board, with a town manager, with the boards and committees, with open town meeting?
Yes.
You know, what do you think is just your philosophy and approach to, to a place like us?
Yeah, I think, you know, the thing about our firm is that we're a South Shore firm.
Yeah.
Right? We live on the South Shore. You know, we represent most of the communities on the South Shore. So we represent Situate and we represent Avington and we represent Rockland and Marshfield and Bridgewater and East Bridgewater. So Plymouth County, we represent a lot of those towns and in Norfolk too. You know, we represent the home of the New England Patriots in Foxborough. So we're, you know, we're in all these different towns and, you know, we really take our cues from the stakeholders in that town, right? We take our cues based on what they really want to see from us. So there are some towns where we're at the select board, you know, a lot because they want to see us and they want to have more information and information sharing is key. And then there are some folks that don't want to pay for us to come to the meetings every week, so they don't utilize us that way. And we really try to take our cues from the client. So you'll see us in towns, like I said, oftentimes where, where they're a lot. And then there are some places where they're not as much because that's been the choice of the client. But I think for us, we try to have that collaborative approach. And I always try to bring it back with the boards and committees to process and education because it's very confusing. Municipal labor relations, municipal HR, you know, it's very, very complicated. You have different laws that have to intersect and interact. And as much as we can educate our boards and committees and talk to them about process, the easier it is for us to be able to get those results that we need to get and get to that finish line. So I always try to take it back to process and education and really try to lay it out for folks so that they can understand where we're coming from and why, the why to why we're taking a certain approach or why we're handling a certain, a thing a certain way. You know, it's hard because we have a lot of confidential subjects because we do deal with HR, so we have to toe that line and it does add an additional layer. Like we always talk, we're like, if this was Google, you know, we can't operate like it's Google because it's not. So we have to take, you know, we have to deal with the, we have to deal with this landscape. And, and really that's what we've been able to do very effectively. That's what we've grown to the point that we've grown to. So when John and I started the firm, John represented five municipalities and I think we're up to almost 30 now. So we've really grown and it's because of the fact that we have this different approach. We're not like everybody else. And I always say that to new towns that are coming on and interviewing us. You're not going to get the same approach with us. We have a different approach. We don't have an emphasis on litigation or grinding billable hours. We want to help empower people to make good decisions and be there to help them be able to talk through these issues and solve problems.
So my question is, is a little more tailored to general counsel, so I'm just going to maybe drop a few words. But if you could describe your approach to training and supporting the, either the staff or the committee volunteers that impact especially labor discussions, on their roles and responsibilities and what kind of best practice communication channels?